Stafford County Board of Supervisors is hereby called to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Bomke.
Here.
Mr. Cavalier.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. Dutton Heffer.
Here.
Mrs. Mauer.
Here.
Ms. Shelton.
Here.
Mr. Snellings.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. Thank you and good afternoon. My name is Meg Bomke. I represent the Falmouth District and serve as Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. I would like to take this opportunity to thank our public safety staff, the sheriff's deputies, and fire and rescue workers for their efforts following the storm and the microburst that hit South Stafford especially hard on Sunday, August 12th. Approximately sixty-two houses sustained varying levels of damage and crews were out working with these residents immediately afterwards, and we are still working on cleaning up the storm damage. Thank you also to VDOT road crews who are working to repair the damage to Brook Road and other roads in the county that sustained damage due to recent flooding. I'd like to recognize our public work staff, including Scott Ray, Tom Fecto, Gary Irvin, Brenda Duckworth, Mimi Fahah, Glenn Huffman, Casey Irvin, and Sammy Pixel, who have had a challenging, record-setting summer of rainfall and have handled a huge amount of weather-related complaints. And I can just tell you, I flew into Reagan Airport last Sunday night and they shut down the baggage claim for two hours due to the storm. I don't think that happens at an airport very often. So I do want to thank everybody for all their efforts. We realize that people are still dealing with a lot of these issues. I'd like to let you know that the landfill is open for free until the 26th of next week. If you have debris that you would like to take out there, it is free, okay? So spread that on Facebook and with your neighbors, please. Now I would like to recognize Fire Chief Joe Cardella and Virgil Gray, Division Chief Emergency Management. Thanks to the hard work of these two gentlemen and many others in the Department of Fire and Rescue and Emergency Management, I am proud to announce that the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration and the National Weather Service have officially recognized Stafford County as a storm-ready community. We got to test that out this past Sunday. This recognition shows Stafford County's dedication to providing its residents exceptional preparedness for weather events. The National Weather Service specifically commends Division Chief Gray as the driving force in maintaining community preparedness. His initiative and hard work in training citizens as well as maintaining strong ties with the National Weather Service has been instrumental in Stafford County reattaining its storm-ready status. So if I could please ask Chief Cardello and Division Chief Gray to please come forward and if we could have a great round of applause for their efforts. I think, as we all know, we've had more rain this summer than, golly, I don't know since when. So just want to say a huge congratulation to you gentlemen for your efforts in the community and you're there willing and able and on standby all the time, ready to help our citizens. So, is there anything you'd like to add?
I'd like to say that this is a very important recognition we've got from the Weather Service, and they don't give it out lightly. There's a long list of things we must do to certify that we are ready. What this certification shows is that we are prepared and ready as a community. It's about being ready for the community's increasing vulnerability to extreme weather and water events. A couple of examples of the things we had to redo this time was all of our dispatchers and the communications center must get specialized training to send and receive weather alerts from the Weather Service. And also, we have positioned weather radios at every school so that they have early warning for the students. So a couple of examples of things we do just to do certification. But congratulations to the community again on their efforts the past couple of weeks with the storm. And hopefully, of course, hope is that I get a course of action this business, but hopefully it will slow down here sometime soon. Chief.
Emergency management's a lot of what we do in Stafford County fire and rescue, and we're very fortunate to have two of the best in Virgil Gray and Katie Carpenter, who work tirelessly on all these things that you can, and this is kind of the result of it, is we get recognized for being prepared. So I'm just very happy that I get to work with you guys and learn from you guys, and thanks for all you do.
So I'm just going to read this. It says, "Storm-ready National Weather Service, Stafford County, Virginia. Stafford County has met all of the storm-ready communications, safety, and preparedness requirements necessary to help people within the community to receive weather warnings and to respond to future weather events." So again, congratulations, and I really appreciate your leadership here. It's so important for the community. While we're recognizing county employees, the board would also like to congratulate Ed Hayner, who is our Acquia wastewater plant manager, on being chosen by the Virginia Water Environmental Association as recipient of the Public Official Award. Ed was chosen by the WVEA Board of Directors for his outstanding work and dedication to the wastewater industry. Congratulations, Ed, for this recognition and achievement. Nurse Cindy Harrell, the Stafford Hospital Emergency Department Nurse/Manager, was recently awarded the Patriot Award for her support of a nurse in her department who serves in the United States Naval Reserves. The Patriot Award is a National Department of Defense recognition that reflects the efforts made to support citizen and military through a wide range of measures, including flexible schedules, time off prior to and after deployment, caring for families, and granting leaves of absences if needed. The board wishes to extend its sincere thanks for Cindy's efforts in support of our military and our congratulations on receiving the Patriot Award. Thank you, Cindy, for your efforts there. Just a reminder that Stafford County school students are going to be returning to the classroom on Tuesday, September 4th, so let's all please be careful and cognizant of our speed when we're driving to and from wherever we're going, because there will be a lot of school-aged children out there. The first order of business is approval of the meeting agenda. There are no additions or deletions to the agenda.
Madam Chair, any motion to approve the agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All right, cast your vote. Tally your vote. There we go.
There we go. Just say yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Now we have presentations by the public, which I know some of you have been waiting for. If you'd like to comment, please remain courteous and respectful to members of the audience and to the board. It's important to keep track of the time at the podium so that everyone who wishes to speak will have an opportunity. If you're here to speak about this evening's public hearing, please hold those comments to the seven o'clock PM session, if you will. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. Speak slowly and clearly into the microphone and begin by stating your name and address. Please refer to the light on the podium to monitor the time of your presentation. Green indicates the start of your remarks. Yellow indicates that you have one minute to summarize, and red obviously means that your time is up. So I do have a number of speaker cards, so I'm going to start with the speaker cards and then I'll ask people from the audience if they would also like to address the board. The first one, and I'm doing these by order of how they came in today. The first one is Andy Robeson.
Hi.
Hello.
My name's Andy Robeson. I live on 70 Lynn Haven Lane. I'm the property owner and resident of 70 Lynn Haven Lane. And I'm here to speak about the Lynn Haven Lane Service District, which is on the agenda tonight for under old business. In January of 2012, I wanted, I was doing research on how to get Lynn Haven Lane, which is an old unpaved road, converted into a public paved road. And I discovered the rural road addition process. And the first step in that process was to contact your county supervisor, which I did, Cord Sterling, in January 2012. Cord Sterling referred me to Keith Dayton, who is probably here, and he started to guide us along the process of how to get our road converted into a public paved road. And the first step in that process was to do a petition by the residents, by the owners, which we did, seventy-five percent burden on the petition. We submitted that petition, and the Board of Supervisors met and approved our petition and approved for VDOT to do a kind of tabletop estimate of the cost of paving our road. They came back with a cost of between $3,000 and $500,000. At that point, Keith informed us that if we wanted to proceed further, we would need to do another petition, removing a caveat that we had on the first petition, and assuming that the cost would be the higher amount and that we would cover that cost. So we did a second petition. That was completed in 2016 with, again, a seventy-five percent approval. At that point, the Board of Supervisors met and approved our petition and also funded $20,000 to do a detailed engineering study of our road to find out what the actual cost would be. That cost came back much lower than the original estimate and was presented to the owners in 2017, March of 2017. At that point, we were told that the next step in the process is to do another petition for the rural, I'm sorry, the Lynn Haven Lane Service District. So we did that petition, again, at least seventy-five percent on that petition, and that's the petition that was, that will come again before the board tonight. And so I'm here asking the board to please approve the process that was given to us by the county to get our road paved and become a public road. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carrie Robeson.
Hi, I'm Carrie Robeson, and I live at 70 Lynn Haven Lane, and I am in support of the road project. One of my big concerns for our road is the intersection where our road meets Courthouse. Courthouse Road is a forty mile an hour road, and the visibility both directions is not very far. And so pulling out of our, off of our road onto Courthouse can be dangerous. There are times when I pull out, it's clear, I pull out, and as soon as I'm out on the road, there's somebody right on my tail. And I think it's just a matter of time for, that somebody could become seriously injured in that, at that location. Most of the time, I won't even turn left, because you just, it's so hard to see both directions. I can see to the left and get out on the road, but to see both directions at the same time and get pulled out, there's no way. It's very, very dangerous. So, and I worry for family, of course, my friends that visit my house, neighbors that live on the road, anybody that pulls in and out of that location. So I am in support of the road and hope that you will approve it.
Thank you. The next speaker is Hannah Robeson.
Hi, I'm Hannah Robeson, and I live at 70 Lynn Haven Lane, and I'm in support of the road being paved. A few points I have is that buses can't drive down our road to pick up students. It's difficult for emergency vehicles to get down our road, and it's also dangerous to pull out of our road onto Courthouse. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Erin Robeson.
All right, big surprise. Hello, my name's Erin Robeson. I live at 2109 Cowan Boulevard in Fredericksburg. I'm a local real estate agent with Century Twenty-One New Millennium, and I advise my family on real estate. And so basically, they've brought up a lot of, a lot of the issues, a lot of the safety concerns and those things, but as far as property values are concerned, the general property values will go up with having a road, a maintained paved road, which will increase the assessed taxes, which should cover the costs of any maintenance that needed to be done. So, you know, from that, from that point of view, I feel like it would be a good decision. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And last, certainly not least, Josh Robeson.
Hi, my name is Josh Robeson. I live at 14 Justin Court. And I lived on Lynn Haven Lane for about seven or eight years, and I know it's a pain to drive up and down that road, but there's a lot of traffic with golf court, golf course maintenance at the end of the road. They have the Augustine Golf Course Maintenance, and so we have a little bit extra traffic on that road, and there is no maintenance for all the potholes and things that appear. So I'm just here to support paving Lynn Haven Lane. Thank you.
And you didn't hurt your arm on Lynn Haven, did you?
No.
Okay. Okay. Next is Dana Brown.
Hi, I'm Dana Brown. I live at 41 St. Williams Way. And Madam Chairman, I'm leaving town tonight. Would it be okay if I commented on the public hearing tonight, because I can't make it, or do I just have to pass on that?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just had a couple of comments about the public hearing, mostly the Fredericksburg Christian School. I have two concerns. One of them, I'm not sure all the parties involved are negotiating the best price for us, so that might be something we want to think about. And the second thing is, is if you do approve it, I would ask that you consider having the schools kick in an extra one and a half million dollars. This would lower the amount borrowed, you know, in the finance, saving us money. My reasoning is, the school board works for months developing their priority list. They present their top priorities to you for funding. Usually, you're not able to fund all of their priorities. However, this year, you made a Herculean effort, I thought, to fund their needs, and you even gave them our transportation money to help them. You went above and beyond. But I feel like they took advantage of your generosity, because three weeks later, they turned around and decided to start school three weeks early at a considerable cost of about a million and a half dollars, between the buses they said they'd air condition and the extra utility cost. Keeping in mind, this was going to provide us no educational benefit, according to Dr. Benson, our then superintendent. This was not one of their top priorities. In fact, it wasn't even on their priority list at all. When I questioned them on the cost, their response was, "Well, we'll find it somewhere." Really? They claimed they were so underfunded that you gave them road money, but suddenly they can find about a million and a half dollars laying around? I feel like they played you. I feel like they played you bad, again. I think you should make them use that found money and put it down on the school, and they can decide which one they want more. Do they want Fredericksburg Christian, or do they want to start school three weeks early? So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Iris Lozano.
My name is Iris Lozano. I live at 30 Skywood Court in Rock Hill District. I'm here this afternoon to urge you to leave the cemetery ordinance enacted in December of 2016 on change. I was quite surprised that board even sent the ordinance back to the Planning Commission for review. It was good policy when it was passed unanimously by the Planning Commission in November 9, 2016. It was good legislation when it was passed unanimously by the board on December 13, 2016. And it remains good legislation supported by scientific fact today. When the Planning Commission passed the cemetery ordinance and forwarded it to the Board of Supervisors in 2016, it did so after having reviewed numerous studies that provide hard scientific evidence which document the fact that proximity of cemeteries to sources of drinking water poses a significant health risk. These studies all recommend a minimal setback requirement of 250 meters or proximity to 275 yards would exceed the distance of 250 yards established in ordinance O-1639. A few of the studies provide even greater setback recommendations. The Planning Commission held another series of hearings in 2017 and 2018 during which the public was invited to testify and present evidence which might support rescinding or modifying the ordinance as established. Not such evidence was presented by any of the individuals who testified in support of revoking the ordinance, but additional studies were found which corroborate the previous finding and supporter, leaving the setback requirements intact. Iris, that you leave ordinance O-1639 intact without modification. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have Pedro Rodriguez.
Ma'am, if it's all the same with you, I would like, I request to go tell at least Mr. Dave Silver and Mr. Glenn Patterson if want, that's for a reason.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. Then we'll set you aside. I have Glenn Patterson is next.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman and Supervisors. My name is Glenn Patterson, and I reside at 8 Skywood Court in the Rock Hill District. As Ms. Lozano mentioned, there is a significant body of evidence which has been presented to the Planning Commission by numerous residents documenting the risks associated with establishing cemeteries too closely to sources of drinking water, whether they're private or municipal. Each of those studies provided recommended setback requirements of at least 250 meters, with a few recommending setbacks of as much as 300 meters or more. When the Planning Commission passed the cemetery ordinance and forwarded it to the Board of Supervisors in 2016, it did so after having considered the previously mentioned studies which provided hard scientific evidence that documented the fact that proximity of cemeteries to sources of drinking water poses a significant health hazard. No science has been presented to refute the recommendations or the ordinance as enacted. Ordinance O-1639 strikes a good balance between protecting county residents' drinking water and allowing petitioners who have done their due diligence to establish cemeteries in the county without putting residents' health at risk. I have a petition signed by more than a hundred Stafford County voters who are firmly opposed to modifying ordinance O-1639 in any way. In Resolution R-17-263, where the board sent the cemetery ordinance back to the Planning Commission for review, the background report stated that Health Department regulations require setbacks of fifty or a hundred feet between any drinking water well and the cemetery. That is misleading in that the regulation referred to in 12 VAC 5-630-680 of the Virginia Administrative Code refers specifically to the construction of new wells, while the cemetery ordinance addresses the requirements for the establishment of a new cemetery. The Health Code codifies the requirements for establishment of a new well in proximity to various sources of potential contamination, one of which are cemeteries, and Tag 3.1 under that section provides the distances mentioned in the background report. It requires a successful sanitary survey by local health department and prohibits the construction of the well if safety standards cannot be met. There is a distinct difference between that process, which requires successful testing, and the establishment of a new cemetery in proximity to drinking water sources where testing is not required. There is no reference within the Health Department regulations regarding the creation of a cemetery in proximity to already established public or private wells. Finally, I'd like the board to consider the legal and financial ramifications of rescinding ordinance O-1639 without some scientific basis for doing so, especially given the voluminous evidence which has been presented to support the ordinance. I don't have a crystal ball, but I don't think you have to be Nostradamus or John Edwards to define the depth and breadth of the county's liability if modifying this ordinance allows a single well to become contaminated with the attendant negative health consequences. I can already envision the class action attorneys lining up to be first to bring a suit. I strongly urge you to leave ordinance O-1639 intact with no modification. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Susan Stonehill.
My name is Susan Stonehill. I reside at 7007 Cedar Hollow Road, Fredericksburg, Virginia, 22407. My company is Hermitage Homes, Inc., and I'm a new home builder. I am here about the Lynn Haven Lane Road Improvement Service District petition.
Could you do me a favor and just pull the mic down a little bit in front of you?
Sure.
Because everybody wants to watch at home. Thank you.
My, my company is Hermitage Homes, Inc., and I'm a new home builder. I purchased a lot at 78 Lynn Haven Lane, Stafford, on May 10, 2018, and I'm currently building a home for sale at this location. I purchased the lot from Valerie Sinkovitz, who started the process on April 25, 2017, for Lynn Haven Lane Road Improvement Service District petition to bring the road up to state standards for acceptance into the state system of highways for maintenance. I'm in agreement with the petition for the Board of Supervisors of Stafford County to form the Lynn Haven Lane Service District to allow for the establishment of a service, a special tax levy upon all properties served by Lynn Haven Lane for the purpose of generating funds to pay for road improvements to bring Lynn Haven Lane up to state standards. I'm not familiar with the process of incorporating an existing road into the state system of highways that has been in existence for a period of time. I understand Keith Dayton, who works for Stafford County, did invest $20,000 in preliminary survey and engineering and sent me the road plans for Lynn Haven Lane. This included a funding calculation. It is beyond me that the road improvement has not already been done for a few reasons. Lynn Haven Lane is in the heart of Stafford, and its location next to Augustine subdivision, I believe, warrants the improvements to Lynn Haven Lane as it is in the heart of the communities that are springing up and already exist. Lynn Haven Lane is used by fourteen residents plus the Augustine Golf Course Maintenance Crew, which I believe number eight. This is a highly trafficked and well-used road. I believe eighty-five percent of the homeowners that live on Lynn Haven Lane are in agreement with and confirm the willingness to fund improvements through establishment of a service district. There are work crews on Courthouse Road now, and Stafford has acknowledged the need for improved roads to service all the traffic from the growth it has experienced. Lynn Haven Lane is an area in need of this improvement as well, right off Courthouse Road. There was no HOA setup for Lynn Haven Lane when it was originally created, so there are no funds to maintain the gravel road. It is inundated with potholes and I believe has some impact on erosion in accordance with the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act. I am in need of this project going ahead sooner than later. I recently had a couple who loved the home I was building and would have bought it if the road was in better condition. I believe the condition of the road will impact my ability to sell this home. When I purchased the lot, the Realtor, Joe Knight, indicated the petition to improve Lynn Haven Lane had been approved. Is this true? If so, when will the funding be approved? When will the road improvement begin? Thank you for listening to my petition for road improvement of Lynn Haven Lane, and will anticipate your favorable action in arranging for this process to be accomplished in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Todd Lewis.
Hello, I'm Todd Lewis, and also 57 Lynn Haven Lane. And I'm supporting the Quincy Lynn Haven Lane Tax District. And I've lived there since 77, on Lynn Haven Lane in Stafford, and the road used to be a lot easier to maintain with fewer homes there and the golf course not there. With the golf course there and the heavy trucks, it really takes a toll on it. Like before, we could actually maintain it just ourselves, just shovels. But now, we can't do that. And as the previous speaker said, there's, she's got it a little wrong, there's more than fourteen residents on there, I think it's fourteen homes on there, a lot more than fourteen residents, and there's a lot more than eight people going in and out of the golf course every day. Most of them are heavy trucks and, and a lot of the workers there, and it takes a real toll on the road. There's safety issues that my wife will talk about in just a second. She's next. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Don Lewis.
Hi, my name is Don Lewis, and I live on 57 Lynn Haven Lane. You'll hear a lot about that all day. My issues come from a mother's point of view. There are some real challenges living on this gravel road. When it snows, if it snows a great deal, I don't know when we're going to get out. I work for Stafford County Public Schools, and I will admit, I love a good snow day. I love a snow day. But there comes a point where if you don't get the kids out and get them to target, they're going to climb the walls and drive you crazy. So I never know when we're going to get out. And I believe they've already brought up about the blind curve at Courthouse Road. I don't let my children ride the bus. It's a horrible bus stop. People fly down that curve and nobody can see, and it's dangerous to get in and out. And my son, I would like my son to be able to ride his bike on a paved road and not have to walk through giant potholes to get to his friend's house that have standing water in them for weeks at a time when we get these... water in them for weeks at a time when we get these rains. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Deborah Foy.
Fay.
Fay, Deborah Fay.
Not on Lynn Haven Road.
Okay.
Thank you though. I got my own problems. Hi, I'm Deborah Fay. Good afternoon. I want to be short and sweet. Reason I'm here is to address my road safety concerns on Brook Road between Raven Road and Marlboro Point. That's kind of between the VRE and Aquia Landing Beach. Used to be called Aqua Po. We relocated to Stafford two years ago, and the reason why we selected the area is convenience of VRE, my husband's Vice President of System Operations of Air Traffic in the FAA, hospital location, and the three-acre lots because we have dogs, and we like to kayak, too. In the past two years, we've been able to get to our home twice because of flooding on Brook Road. So just, I think it was two months ago, imagine driving 13 hours home with three dogs, three miles from home, and we can't get home because the road is flooded over. And it wasn't a pleasant evening sleeping in the VRE because hotels don't want three dogs. So I'm asking for funding for a two-mile road stretch between Raven and Marlboro Point to fix the drainage, or elevate the road, and widen the shoulder to improve safety, and maybe explore a road option because there is a road, the Girl Scout Road, between Courthouse and Brookcrest, for emergency only, for residents only, when we do have a flooding issue, before you guys reach in your money, magic money bag, to fix the road. And I know we have issues with the preserve land, it being a wet area, but it seems to be getting worse with more pavement. I'd like to see the road widened because you've got trees adjacent to the road edge, and there's no shoulder, and if there is a shoulder, it's a ditch. So people, when they're driving there on a day-to-day basis, in particular the larger vehicles, they're hugging the middle of the road. It's common. It's safer, actually. And I don't care if there's no cellphone coverage out there because I don't want people heads down in that area. That's a place where you need to be on the road. So if we go off the ditch, hopefully some neighbor will pick you up. And if funding allows, if you could remove some of the failing trees, because there are a lot of trees that are just waiting for the storm. And if the Board of Supervisors have an opportunity to look at the Friends of Brook Road Facebook page, what has gone through with that microburst that affected South Stafford, also affected Brook Road, to see all the roads, the trees that fell over and people that couldn't get home. We may only be 1,000 residents, but there's two public parks, the beach and the kayak area of Crow's Nest, and it would really help our lives a lot from a safety standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kristy Burchenoff. I reside at 20 Skywood Court. I am here to speak about the ordinance 016-39. I just ask that you keep it in place. I have two young children. We have a well. It makes me nervous that they want to put a cemetery in that proximity to my drinking water. And then I think about Quantico and the artillery and the bombing. It shakes my house, the foundation shifting. What's it doing to all the wells? What's it going to do to the cemetery and the caskets or whatever they're buried in and those contaminants getting into my well? And I just ask that you think about our drinking water as you do the public's, because it's one and the same. Just because we have private wells doesn't mean it shouldn't be considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Computer, please.
My name is David Silver. I reside at 2 Skywood Court, and...
Mr. Silver, could you move a little closer to the microphone? Thank you.
Yes, I reside at 2 Skywood Court. I bought the house in 2010. And if you look at the next slide here, you'll see the flooding that occurs at the house. And my well is porous, and it's less than 50 feet from the other side of the road. And then you have the property slopes towards Garrisville Road, and is approximately 8 feet to 20 feet in elevation. And then the culvert floods and diverts back into my front yard. And you can see here where it's flooding in the front yard. And this is my well water, and you can tell where the water is actually above the ground level, and it's porous and old, so anything that is put on the ground will actually get into the soil and into the well water. So as observed in the photographs, due to the elevation, flooding, and the close proximity of the property to my well, I would just like to urge the board to keep the cemetery ordinance intact as is, and giving us the same protection on drinking water as the public drinking water. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'm going to come back to Mr. Rodriguez, Pedro Rodriguez.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman and Supervisors. Excuse me. My name is Pedro Rodriguez, and I reside at 22 Skywood Court in the Rock Hill District. This is in regards to Cemetery Ordinance 016-39. Again, the reason for me asking to be last is I'm basically the wrap-up guy, so to speak. I'm here this afternoon to once again strongly urge you to leave the cemetery ordinance that was enacted in December of 2016 unchanged. The facts, figures, and risks have been presented, as well as graphics, which demonstrate how these risks are very real and potentially harmful to the residents if gone unheeded. As the saying goes, a picture is worth 1,000 words. And in that light, please take note of what has already been presented, not only as facts and figures, but of what could potentially be an unsafe and disastrous situation in reality. I stand with my fellow residents and strongly, again, and again strongly urge you to leave ordinance 016-39 intact without modification. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, at this point in time, I'll open up the, to the public, and we'll start with people over here on the right. If anybody would like to address the board, please go ahead and come up now.
Good afternoon. I'm the Speaker of the House. I live in 52 Lynn Haven Lane.
If you could please list your name and your address, please.
Evelyn Arenas, and we live in 52 Lynn Haven Lane. I'm here with my husband, Danilo Bonilla, and we're here just to support our neighbors and just the same, same reasons. We, we need an improvement and an upgrade. That was our, it started home. We have a big family with small kids, all ages, so we do use the bus stop a lot. And there's a lot of concerns from the flooding, from the, when it comes to the winter, wintertime, the snow going in and out, the ice rose, the black ice, it just, it's terrible for us. Me speaking as a mother, as an investor as well, because it's our, it started home. We want to upgrade, and even though we're a big family, we're willing to do the extra on the mortgage, but we do want the upgrade, and we really need it. It does have a lot of potholes in it, so when it comes to cars, that will hit, it's a gravel road, of course, so it will hit the cars a lot, and the houses, it gets flood. It takes forever to, to drain. It's, we just, we need an improvement overall. We want our kids to be able to go out safely and play and ride their bikes. Me personally have had a few problems because they're going out to play, and they're coming in, their cars coming in too, way too fast, and we're trying to put the signs up saying there's kids, but the road is a little bit too dangerous. And I also would like to add that I have talked to the neighbors around our home. They are Spanish, and just to refer them, they're right here, too. Their name is Selena, they're my neighbor, and I'm pretty, they're here to support just because of the language barrier. I'm just stepping up a little, I hope they don't mind. But they are here to agree, and we spoke to everybody. There's a whole bunch of mommies there, but you don't, you don't want to see all the kids here and all the mommies lining up, but I'm the mommy speaker here, too, as well, because I have kids. So just to put it out there. So thank you.
All right. Thank you for coming today with your children back there.
I'm sorry.
Is there anybody else in the board chambers that would like to address the board? If so, please come forward.
Fine, thank you.
Okay, no one else? Okay, with that, I'm going to bring it back to the board. We now have reports of board members. Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. This has been a rather busy period. I attended the event at the William Howell Library. That's part of the annual activities to promote reading. I attended the Global Leadership Summit at Ebenezer United Methodist Church, which was a very moving and interesting experience. Had the great fortune of attending a Triple Eagle Ceremony for Troop 199, and congratulate Eric Foxhill, Shane Lord, and Sean McCosker on earning this great achievement. I attended the summer school graduation, which was at North Stafford High School. It's indoors and is a very, very user-friendly activity, and many of the young men and women who were graduating were going into our military services, which was really excellent to see. Ms. Bomke and I toured Ferry Farm Elementary School. I met with the Ferry Farm PTA concerning the renovation proposal, and it was a very positive and productive meeting, staying on the school topic. The fire chief and I met with Tom Nichols and other school staff about reinstituting the fire training class. Almost every time that I go on a ride-along with the fire, or I visit them, or see them at something, whether they are paid or volunteer, they all hearken back to how productive and how wonderful this class was in recruiting people, both as volunteers and as members of the force. So it's something that the, some members of the school board and some of the members up here are really working towards, and our chief is taking the lead in trying to make that happen. Also discussed with Mr. Nichols, a topic that we had discussed at a retreat, which is workforce education and career education. And as I've been going around talking to different businesses, and particularly in my district, there's a lot of companies that are wanting to hire, and so we're trying to connect those companies with our graduates so that it can be useful, rather than us graduating students and them not knowing what to do, and some of these are hands-on jobs that are, some people are very adept at. I'm not, but some people are very good at that. In the same line of thinking, there was a tour with Congressman Whitman last week that I believe several of us went on to local businesses, which was useful. We met with Transurban about the hotlines and learned some interesting facts about where Courthouse Road and the hot lane information, so if you check online or contact any of us for that. There was a workshop on downtown Stafford. Old Forge, down that community, there was a soccer field dedicated. Stafford Junction Church put together churches from many areas of the county, plus numerous businesses, and they got donated the materials to put in a soccer field. And I got to see, over the course of the summer, a dilapidated field, go to nothing, and then be a field where children can play. And Andrew Milliken in our fire department, and then our own Jason Towery, were very important in getting that done and working on that. And it's great to see the community come together to help others in the community. Then there was a ceremony honoring three amazing young children who, down in that community, and they, these are very young children, tweens, that put out a fire, contacted 911, and contacted the owner of where the fire was. And it was terrific to see that the fire chief and other members of the fire department coming to honor them and recognize them for doing what many adults don't do, which is standing up in crises. Stafford Junction handed out backpacks and school supplies yesterday, and the Berea Fire Station, A-Shift, and I were out there helping them with that, and I believe they normally do about 250 families that they help to get, and there's many other churches in our community that do that. I attended a national night out in a neighborhood in my district, as well as at Stafford Marketplace, and I thanked Deputy Decatur, or sorry, Sheriff Decatur, for allowing me to have a role in that, even if it did cause a thunderstorm. I did fire, I did ride-alongs with fire department, both paid and volunteer. Tended the first responders' breakfast, which was a moving experience. Did a ride-along with the police, and if you ever want to hear a great story about our police and our Commonwealth Attorney's Office, please contact me, where because of their due diligence in looking into help a single woman who was attacked in another state and trying to help her, and then the foresight by our Commonwealth Attorney's Office to put things into somebody's parole, they were able to do something. And it was really terrific to be there and watch them. It was a situation they could have just said, "It's not our county, it's not our business," but they stepped up to put the citizens first, and that was terrific. Two strong focuses of my summer have been Falmouth and our flooding down on River Road, and I know that some people are tired of me going on about it. I was very happy to go down and help with, do some clearing on some private property, and I thank staff for helping with trying to get this area up and running. It's raining today, which, and it rained in Culpeper, so it's going to cause more damage down there. But we're still on track for Yankees in Falmouth down on September 8th and 9th. We may be parking somewhere differently, but we're still on track to do that great event. And lastly, and Ms. Bomke mentioned it, but we did have that microburst, and it was really terrific, our fire and rescue and police, the EMTs, doing everything. I went out to visit some people during it, and there were so many intersections out, and our police were called to deal with that. I believe there was over 100 calls within four hours to our fire and rescue that afternoon into the evening. So I appreciate all the men and women that we are fortunate to have in this county, helping us with those. I also praise the citizens of Stafford, particularly my area, who went out with their chainsaws and their axes and cleared the roads so the emergency vehicles could go through, helped their neighbors, took care of their neighbors, took them to the doctors. This is, a situation like this makes us realize what is terrific and so special about Stafford County, is that we actually care for each other and we look out for each other. And so I appreciate all of you for doing that. And that concludes my month so far.
Mr. Dudenheffer.
Thank you. Two things, is I'd like to echo something that Tom just said, talking about the excessive amounts of rain. The biggest sinkhole I've ever seen in my life was 100 feet from my house, so I got to watch it decay over some time and then get built back up. So I want to thank VDOT for stepping up and taking care of this, was right on the edge of. Eustis Road required the road to be closed, but they, they did a Herculean effort. The county staff also stepped in, and I, the neighbors there, I'm sure, are quite aware. If you don't know, in Stafford County, I would estimate we have hundreds of millions of dollars worth of stormwater and Chesapeake Bay cleanup issues across the board. So I've received a lot of emails from people that want the county, or VDOT, or somebody to step in and fix issues on their roads. I really hope we can evaluate everyone and do our best on them, but I don't see, if it's on private property, you're probably responsible for your own issues. If it affects the road, I think we can get VDOT to take care of it. So it's unfortunate that that's the case, and I'm sure that's not the message or the answer that a lot of people want. It's just, you know, when you've got that kind of, the rain that we've had, and then the issues that we've had over some time, it's pretty, it's pretty bad, so I'll leave that out. One good news story is the Newland developer who develops the Embry Mill Project publicly announced an agreement that they made with me several months ago, but they expect to start moving dirt on the peace of mind... months ago, but they expect to start moving dirt on the Peace of Mind Road that is not complete and expect to have the connection made. They said theoretically it could happen by the end of the year, but they're assuming whether it'll be the beginning part of next year. So, that's good news. It'll help a tremendous amount in that neighborhood. There's a lot of churn in the, we hear a lot on the face, on my Facebook page and others about restaurants and about grocery stores and all those things. I can assure you that there is significant amount of churn in the background that many times we can't talk about for a long time. But believe me, there's a lot of really, really good things coming to Stafford County in the near future. So, thank you very much.
Mrs. Mauer.
All righty. In the interest of time, I'm going to keep this brief. First, I want to thank all of the residents of the Rock Hill District that came out and spoke passionately on a number of issues that are before the board today. I always welcome your comments and I welcome you reaching out to me at any time. So, thank you for coming and speaking before this board. Secondly, I also want to welcome the new businesses. I attended several ribbon cuttings during the break. And slowly but surely, Rock Hill is coming to life with new businesses along the 610 corridor on the western end. And finally, I'd like to have a discussion or like to ask this board to add to the agenda a discussion about stormwater management. I know that we've had a number of significant storms. Some have told me we've had a 200-year storm and a 10-year storm and a 20-year storm, all in the span of the last 90 days. And so, that kind of makes me wonder whether or not how we rate our storms is actually accurate. We did a study in 2005 on stormwater management issues within three specific neighborhoods. And I would like to add a larger discussion on what kind of help that this board and/or VDOT can do because I think, number one, we need to have a pretty strong education campaign. If we are not keeping our culverts clear of debris, clear of trees, I go into some of my neighborhoods and they've got, you know, 200-year-old trees right in the middle of the culvert that's supposed to move that stormwater management. And although maybe their house doesn't flood, but it floods every home right up the way. And so, we need to increase our education campaign on what homeowners can do to ensure that they protect their own property as well as the property of their neighbors. We're all in this together and I am very thankful that staff is going to have a community meeting with me tomorrow night at Rock Hill Elementary School at 7:00 PM to discuss the stormwater management issues that we are having, both in the Vista Woods and Garrisonville neighborhoods. So, it's been a really tough summer with rain and we are very limited in what we can do from a county perspective, but I think we need to educate our homeowners on what they need to be doing in order to protect themselves and their neighbors. Thank you very much. Madam Chairman, that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Ms. Shelton.
I'll try to keep mine brief too, but I have a couple of meetings that we attend to. I'm not going to talk about all the things we did in the summer because we did a lot. But the biggest thing that was nice about the break is because we could focus, all of us could focus on you guys and that's why we're here. And so, but this week, we had an R Board. That's the board that manages your landfill. And Ms. Bomke, who's the chairman or was the chairman until this last meeting, she's going to give a larger briefing, but I wanted to let the quiet residents know is that one of the things that was awesome to be able to approve is the extension of the trails from the Civil War Park over into that area. And why that's important is that that particular area can't be used for the landfill. We've got to be very, very particular about it because it's in an RBA, it's in a wetlands area, but it's got some amazing things to go see. So, I hope that you guys take some time to go out to the Civil War Park and look at those trails. I'm an avid hiker. I meet lots of people on the road, or not the road, but on the trails that are doing that. And so, I'd love to see you guys out there with me. It's a hot and sweaty time, isn't it? And so, the next thing is last night, we had a George Washington Regional Commission meeting and I wanted to give you a synopsis of that. Some of the things that we're doing is setting aside time and resources to do our own address for legislative agenda. Stafford County does some, Fredericksburg does some, and so, we're kind of focusing on that. Number one thing that we talked about that's important to the Acquahia Districts definitely has to do with broadband and continuing to try to bring that forward as not just extending it to the underserved places like us, but also moving that definition into a utility. Wouldn't that be Nirvana? That'd be great. And so, the next thing I got to do while, during this break is I had the pleasure of riding with Engine 9 in Acquahia Harbor for 15 hours. So, I got to go out on I-95 and see how dangerous that is when we had a semi and three accidents. There are three cars that were in the accident. These people take their lives in their hands. So, when I, when I see that they have this extra space that, I'm like, "Why did they block out that road?" Well, it's to save them. And so, it was a really eye-opening experience for me. I also went on an unfortunate overdose and that happens far too, far too often. I don't, you probably already know that. Next thing I wanted to talk about is Brook Road, very, very positive thing. And so, we, if you don't know this, and I think most of you do, but we reported a problem with Brook Road to VDOT. And I went out in the middle of the night, it felt like the middle of the night, it's like 10, 10 o'clock at night, right? And so, I went out there and took some pictures. And with those pictures, VDOT realized that you guys were right. That road is collapsing and just like Bell's Hill. And so, I mean, it literally is. And I want to thank you guys for bringing that forward because I never noticed that. You guys talk about it all the time. And so, Brook, Brook will be repaired this year. And VDOT, Kyle Andrews, God bless you, is redirecting resources to make sure that that portion of it is fixed because it is in danger, not imminent danger. They don't know when it would happen, but it does have the same kind of impact that you would see now on Bell's Hills Road. So, we want to get in front of that so we don't end up shut down. That's a one-way in and out. And so, it's one-way in and out. It floods constantly. You guys know this. And unlike other people, and I don't mean anything by that, so please don't read into it, but I am not giving up on that one. And so, for the next four years, you're going to hear about Brook Road all the time until we find some kind of solution on it. But I did want to say, yay, we got some good news. And so, that was great. And then, the last thing, we talked about broadband. We're still meeting the, for those people that participated in the survey, I got to have the pleasure of knocking on 200 doors and I don't get to do that unless I'm campaigning. No, it's not a fun thing. But anyway, so I did get to go out into the neighborhood, meet lots of people, talk to them. And we are mailing out the survey. We were supposed to mail it out yesterday, but I ended up in meetings so I didn't get to participate in the stuffing of those envelopes. But for those individuals that didn't respond to the survey, that letter will be going out tomorrow. And that concludes my comments, ma'am. Oh, I'm sorry. I need to pull 10 and 11.
In the interest of time, I'll be very brief. I'll defer and pull item 25.
Mr. Cavaliere.
Thank you, Cheryl. I also confine my comments to the Public City, Public Safety Committee meeting that we held today because I think most of you are here for about two issues that we have before us this afternoon. So, we'll move right along. But one of the main topics that we always talk about in public safety is the School Security Task Force that the sheriff has set up. And he and the committee came up with a really innovative solution to a problem that we have. We have school resource officers in all the high school and middle schools, but not in our elementary schools. And so, you know, there's a lot more elementary schools than there are the others. And so, you know, it was a costly endeavor to do this. But what we've come up with is a plan for a pilot program that would put basically three, we're going to call them school protection officers at this point until we can hopefully get some general assembly help here to get some rules changed on retired officers so that they could sit in our elementary schools. But we plan to have three elementary school deputies in the buildings this year. And then, we'll take it from there on the out years. I think it's going to be a very successful program and I think it's going to be, once we can get some enabling legislation from the state, I think that this could be a model statewide that we could use because, you know, nothing's more important than the protection of our, of our children in the schools. And we want to do everything we can to make that happen. And I commend the sheriff for doing that. And he's also going to give the presentation that Mr. Snellings just pulled from consent agenda also. So, he'll talk about some other things there relative to a grant. The other thing came on the fire and rescue side. We had a report on the fire and rescue assessment where there were 57 recommendations made on our whole fire and rescue department. And every one of them has been addressed and/or implemented so far. So, we're making significant strides in that area and we hope to do better all the time, particularly in the area of volunteerism too. We're hiring a coordinator there that's going to focus on getting more people involved in the community, your community, and serve close to where you live to help protect your property and your lives. And one last thing, we've been trying now for a couple of years to reinstate the program in the high schools to put in a vocational type program that would do some early training program for fire and EMS. And if we can get this pushed through and get school board approval, hopefully for next school year, we'll have that program in place for our high school students. Thank you.
And Ms. Bomke.
Yes, thank you. And just wanted to let everybody know, we haven't had a meeting since July 10th. We've been on kind of a recess, but although it's been very, very busy. So, that's why some of our reports are longer than normal. Just want to let everybody in the public know, yesterday Supervisor Snellings and I and Mr. Foley met with the Chair and Vice Chair of the School Board at our monthly Chair-Vice Chair meeting with Ms. Healy and Mr. McCosker. And we discussed all the outstanding items that we need prior to our board taking action on our Virginia Public School Authority bonding, which will probably take place at our September 4th or our next meeting in September. One of the big items is that we want the school division to, or excuse me, the school board to vote on their commitment to redistrict the elementary schools in this next fiscal year because we are looking at purchasing what is known right now as the Fredericksburg Christian School. If we're going to purchase that school for the K through, the preschool programs, we're going to be pulling those. If the school board votes on this, pulling the pre-K kids out of the elementary schools so that we can use those classrooms for more general ed classrooms. In addition to pulling up the, some of the students that are at Head Start right now, they would move up to this Christian School property as well. So, just want to let you know, we've also asked them for an itemization of the Antimon Cure rebuild that's taking place right now. And they will have a meeting, a special called meeting on Wednesday, August 29th to actually vote on these items. But our board has asked for a resolution that's very specific to these items before we approve the VPSA bond. We do have a joint working schools meeting with the school board on next Monday, the 27th. It's actually upstairs in our ABC conference room at 6:00, if you're interested in attending. As Ms. Shelton indicated, we did have an R Board meeting. We rotate between the city and Stafford County. And now, the city is Chairman of the Board and that's Billy Withers, who's on the city council. And Ms. Shelton is Vice Chairman until June 30th of next year. We're actually doing something a little bit different. Keith Dayton, who's in the audience, is, actually does all of our financial reporting for the R Board. And I've asked him if we would actually push that out in our Stafford news so that we can keep the public informed as to what's happening with our landfill. There are a lot of challenges going on in landfills throughout the, throughout the world right now. And I'm going to tell you that I was just at a conference this morning at the University of Mary Washington that relates to composting, composting of debris, composting of food, how we recycle. And I'll just tell you, it's amazing what's being done in Prince William County and Arlington and throughout areas of the Commonwealth. And I'll just leave it without going into a lot of detail. We cannot continue to bury trash the way we're doing it right now. It is not sustainable. So, there'll be a lot more to come on that. And let's see, the library board on July 26th, I'm a new member there. They approved a new leave policy for their employees and they haven't approved a new leave for 30 years. This was a very collaborative effort between the city of Fredericksburg, Spotsylvania County, and Westmoreland. And we did engage the services of a lawyer who actually specializes in human resource matters. And that policy goes into effect October 1 of this year. I do want to thank our Human Resources Manager, Shannon Wagner. She was very helpful to me during this process. Some of you that live in South Stafford, you might notice there's a lot of construction down on River Road. We are actually doing the construction of Phase 6 of the Ferry, Belmont Ferry Farm Trail. So, that trail will be paralleling River Road and coming off of Pratt Park. And it will be going up to the Chatham Bridge. And you'll actually be able to walk across the bridge to the city. And when we rent, when we redo the Chatham Bridge, that's going to be rebuilt. There will actually be a pedestrian lane on there. So, it'll be much safer than what you see today. Lastly, I attended the VACO Summer Summit last week. And at our board meeting, they did indicate that Amazon is down to three sites in the state, in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And two of them are in Northern Virginia. Loudoun County and Fairfax have actually gone together with a package. And then Arlington has a separate package. There's another one down in Hampton Roads, but I believe they've been eliminated. It's going to be a 15-year build-out of what Amazon is projecting. And I just want to say that we, as a Virginia Association of Counties Board, actually gave, are sending a letter of support to Amazon indicating that we are supporting this for our Commonwealth. While it may not be right here in our region, it will bring a lot of economic development to the Commonwealth of Virginia if Amazon does end up relocate or establishing their new facility in the Commonwealth. And I'll just say that there were a lot of legislative issues that were discussed at our VACO board meeting. And we'll be working with our legislative team here on our own Board of Supervisors. And with that, I will conclude my remarks and we'll bring it back to the board for approval of the consent, excuse me, excuse me. Mrs. McLendon, do you have a report to the board?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm actually going to concede my time to Deputy County Attorney David Honadle so he can introduce himself to the board.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. First, let me say that I'm very happy to have the opportunity to serve my fellow friends and neighbors in Stafford County. I actually live in the county, so I'm so happy to be here. I come most recently from Fairfax County where I was a member of the General Law Section of the County Attorney's Office there. Before that, I was a partner in a law firm in Manassas where I worked for over 15 years. And while I was there, I served as Assistant City Attorney for the City of Manassas. And I was also worked on behalf of both the towns of Culpeper, Haymarket, and Oquaquan. I look forward to working with all of you and I am happy to speak with any of you at any time. But I will keep this brief because I know you have a very long agenda today.
Thank you. Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
And thank you to Ms. McLendon and her County Attorney's Office. I know they went through extensive interviews for quite a long time. And we all know Rashida well and she's not going to settle for anything less than what she's looking for. So, thank you for your leadership. And with that, Mr. Foley.
Yes, Madam Chair. Just a few things briefly. You have in your board packet the updates on the priority projects and initiatives we've been tracking for the last year or so. If you have any questions, be glad to answer those. And I'll address one thing briefly in just a moment. But we are transitioning from that list of priorities and initiatives to your strategic plan. And I have also included the three-year priorities developed by the board at its strategic planning session at the end of June. As that document notes, staff is in the process of taking those priorities that you've established and developing action plans and any clarifications that we might need for each of those priorities. The entire leadership team met within the last two weeks and spent a couple of days going through your strategic priorities and starting to develop those action plans so that we can bring that back to you in October. So, you can take a look at that and hopefully we'll be able to get an approval of your strategic plan in November after you've had a couple of meetings to take a review and provide any guidance that you need to before we finalize. and provide any guidance that you need to before we finalize. So that work is underway, and in the meantime, we're trying to keep up with the priorities that are underway as well and giving you regular reports. The one item on our, in our strategic plan and also on that priority list was the work that's going on with downtown Stafford. We had a work session, of course, last week. And based on that meeting, staff is moving forward with the development of a master plan for the site and also an engagement plan for both the community and the business community that may partner with us in terms of the development of that downtown Stafford. But after the meeting, I had several board members ask me for some more information, particularly related to our market research and a gap analysis. I think the question is, are we sure, do we have enough information that this is going to be successful? So we are in the process of getting together more background information so that we can answer those questions. A lot of work has gone on, and we need to share that with you so that you're fully comfortable with the next steps. As a way to do that and as a follow-up to the work session in general, we would like to add to the agenda on September 4th revisiting the place we are right now, addressing the questions that were raised, and some more background information. It won't be a lengthy thing, but I think it's an opportunity for the public here at this board meeting also to hear more about downtown Stafford and any questions that you have. So I will work with the Chair and Vice Chair, and I think there's important information we can bring back on the 4th related to some of the questions that have been asked. I think that will help the public understand more about what's being discussed and considered also. So I just wanted to provide that quick update, and that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, with that, I'll bring it back to the board. And do I have a motion for the consent minus items 10, 11, and 25?
Sound vote.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, item number 10.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Item number 10 is R-18168, which is an amendment to the RBC, which is also known as the recreational business campus, which will be renamed to Plan Development 3. I just have a small thing I would like to have considered when we move it to the Planning Commission, and I'll refer to Section 2834. Really, all it's doing is describing the purpose of the district. But one of the things it does is it also states, and I'm sorry, I'm going to read this, but it states that it has to be where there's a provision for adequate access to major collector or higher category roadways, public sewer and water, and fire and rescue services. And I would like the staff and Planning Commission to also consider communications as one of those restrictive areas. And the reason is, is specifically because of what Acquia is going through with broadband and having the new developments in areas where we do not have broadband or cellphone coverage is an issue. So I'd just like to add that small change to this resolution. And if it's appropriate, I'd like to just move now that we, yeah, I'd like to move that we refer R-18168 to the Planning Commission with that one change.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Cavalier.
Yeah, I'm going to oppose this entirely because RBC's called name for the recreational business campus. And so we're doing away with the golf course, which is the recreational aspect of this campus. It also says that we're going to increase the residential from 30% to 45%. So that raises that by 50%. And then we're also, you know, our staff says that believes that the comprehensive ordinance and amendments would be appropriate, given that development with Southern Virginia North has resulted in an area that is more residential in nature as opposed to a business campus. Well, that's the name of the zoning category, is a business campus. So now all of a sudden, we're encouraging residential, more residential in something that we've termed and invented as the residential business campus. So none of this makes any sense to me at all. I mean, doing away with the golf course, I mean, that's a right to close the course, but then I believe it should remain as open space in this kind of a setting. That's what we originally intended when we first approved this way back. And now to basically put more housing in there, to do away with the recreational aspect, and preclude further commercial development, which generates more tax revenue for us, I just, there's nothing good about this. I won't vote for it.
All right, Mr. Dudenheffer.
Just, we're not voting for or against, or even the revision, any possible revisions the Planning Commission would make here. We're just referring the proposal down to the Planning Commission to work on, which is kind of their job. So while I, you know, I have reservations all along, also, this isn't just regular residential, this is 55 and older development, if I'm correct on this. So it's not exactly going to flood our schools. But that's not the point. The point is, is we're, we have a developer who's asking for a change, and we're going to, this only sends it back now to the Planning Commission for a review. So I'm going to support it.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we have a motion, and there was a second. So please cast your vote on R-18-168.
As amended.
As amended. Thank you, Mr. Dudenheffer. All right, that motion passes. To send that down, item number 11, Ms. Shelton.
Yes, I'm sorry to be picky about this. At the GWRC meeting last night, one of the things I found out about is called Coastal Zone Management. And so why it applies to R-18197 is within GWRC, apparently we are receiving technical assistance and monies for planning support for local governments. And so in the work that we do for R-18197 on the Planning Commission, I'd like them to come back and show how we're leveraging the GWRC for this coastal zone management program within the local government. Does that make sense? Does to me.
Madam Chair, we can certainly follow up on that question. I don't think you're proposing any change to this item moving forward, but you want more information?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we refer R-18197 to the Planning Commission with no changes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions, Ms. Mauer?
All right, just really quick, in this particular resolution, it refers to Resolution R-18 on the next page, R-18-198. So pursuant to proposed Resolution R-18-198 and Exhibit A there to, oh, no, I found it. Never mind, I withdraw my question.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote on R-18197. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 25, Mr. Snellings.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This afternoon's Public Safety Committee, the sheriff briefed the committee on an application that he has made to ratify, to get a school violence prevention program grant. And I know this is a real important subject to everyone, and I thought it would be nice if the sheriff would take just 60 seconds or so and come up and explain to the public exactly what he's doing.
Madam Chairman and members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. I'll make it brief, but we had a great opportunity to apply for a joint application, joint meaning that the Stafford County Sheriff's Office, the county government, and the Stafford County Schools coming together to apply for the grant. And the grant was applied through the sheriff's office, we wrote the grant. But we used the information that we'd gained through our Safe School Task Force, working with the schools to find out what kind of needs they have for the schools to enhance and improve the school security through technology, just leveraging the technology. I worked closely with the county administrator, Mr. Foley, to get direction and guidance from him as well. So we were able to submit this grant. There's up to $25 million from the Department of Justice for this grant available this year, and we applied for the maximum, which is $500,000, and it's a 25% match. Speaking with budget, during the budget process, the schools, through all the talk for school security, put aside about $500,000 for school security. So we're hoping, not to speak on their behalf or their budget, but we're hoping maybe if we do get the money, or portion of the money, we can use some of that money, put aside for the match portion of it. But it's a great opportunity. We have worked diligently over the years, and Stafford County, since my 32 years of being here, we've been very progressive on our statement back there, Stafford County being progressive, our culture to move forward. And we're at a good place with school security, and we have been for a long time, but we're always taking the attitude and philosophy to move forward, to press forward, because technology is always changing, and we never quite arrived. So we always want to maintain that mentality, that we can always make our schools safer. So this grant is just one part of that. And also, just real briefly, we've been providing school education folks and those that work in the schools, whether you're cafeteria worker, maintenance, or whoever, we've been providing active shooter countermeasures training since after Sandy Hook in 2012. We started the training in 2013 and partnered with the schools and trained over 1,000 teachers. And now this year is the first year that we're training the entire school staff in Stafford County, no matter what job you do there, cafeteria worker, maintenance educator, principal, administrator, everyone's getting the training, and that is part of the ongoing partnership. So on the front end of the school year, everyone's getting the training, so they'll be prepared for the beginning of the year to be a first responder, to help prevent, mitigate any kind of act of violence in a school.
Thank you very much, Sheriff. Appreciate everything you're doing. I'll tell you, we're very fortunate in this community to have your department.
Oh, thank you. And we're very fortunate for the awesome partnership we have throughout the county. Thank you, sir.
Do a great job, and I appreciate it. Madam Chairman, with that, I moved for approval of R-18-212.
All right, have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, with that, cast your vote for R-18-212. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. We're now moving on to unfinished business, item number 26. Public Works Transportation Consider Establishment of the Lynn Haven Lane Service District, Proposed Ordinance 018-33. Mr. Dayton.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Keith Dayton, interim Assistant Director of Public Works, here to speak to Agenda Item 26, Lynn Haven Lane Service District. This matter was brought before the board just over a year ago. At that time, there was a public hearing advertised, held. The public hearing was closed, and the issue was deferred at that time, and is now being brought back before you at the request of Supervisor Mauer. Did that work? Thank you. So by way of background, considering the time that's expired, Lynn Haven Lane is a private road, as you heard. It serves a total of 18 lots. It is off of Courthouse Road. First platted in 1960 as a subdivision, subsequently subdivided a couple of times. There are 15 platted family lots, 13 have homes on them, there's a cemetery, a remnant lot that is too small to be built on, and the golf course maintenance facility, and as you heard, one home under construction. It is about a third of a mile in length, and it's served by a 30-foot-wide private access easement that all residents on that road have the right to use. It is a dirt gravel road, very narrow, has poor drainage, very few ditches, very shallow, and it is rough. The residents on this road first approached county staff and asked if anything could be done to assist them in getting this road accepted into the state system for maintenance. We first investigated the history of the road. It does meet the in-service age requirements in the VDOT manual, and the use also complies with VDOT requirements. So it is eligible to be brought into the state system, but it had to be brought up to state standards before that could be done. That's a picture of it. It is very representative of the entire length of the road, narrow, poor ditches, a lot of potholes along the way, and trees and some utilities near the edge of the road. There have been a number of actions taken to date. As was mentioned, the board, first we coordinated with VDOT. The board did act to instigate that investigation. But we've had a number of further surveys, investigations, and engineering support since that time. We believe that the actual cost will be right around $380,000. We met with the community a couple of different times, discussed with them the total cost, the responsibility for payment, a process to establish the service district. We had sent out petition ballots that met statutory requirements. At that time, 78% of the residents who owned over 60% of the area along Lynn Haven Lane returned the petitions in favor of formation of Lynn Haven Lane Service District. At that time, we received no petitions opposing that, and since that time, we've heard of no one who opposes that, the effort to get that into the state system. That response exceeds minimum state requirements of 50% of the residents owning over 50% of the property must approve the creation of the service district. So the service district boundaries are shown on the graphic, outlined in red. Bring this to your attention. So this would be the boundaries, and only those folks that are served by the road would be included in the service district. So no one who doesn't receive any benefit from Lynn Haven Lane would be pulled into and have to pay for that effort. So as I mentioned, it was before the board previously and deferred at that time. If this ordinance is approved, it would only establish the authority to form a service district. It doesn't approve any funding, it doesn't set a tax rate or any of that. That would or could happen at a later date by subsequent board actions. So this would get us one step further along the way. At that point, we would go ahead and order up dedication plats. The 30-foot is not wide enough, it needs to be 40-foot. The easement does not serve the purposes for state maintenance, it would need to be dedicated right away. We would get the plats drawn up, we'd go out and meet the residents, and we would need 100% cooperation with respect to dedicating property as right-of-way for the purposes of acceptance. So subsequent actions would involve funding, tax rate, and that sort of thing. So this would, again, would be just the first step along the way, or the next step along the way, I should say. I did want to call out, I noticed that the, in your package, it seems to be labeled Ordinance 01823, but the agenda is 01833. I believe that 01833 is correct, but I would ask for confirmation of that. But we do support the formation of this Lynn Haven Lane Service District, and happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Mr. Dayton? Ms. Mauer?
Mr. Dayton, we've had several people come before us and express their support of this Lynn Haven Lane Service District. When we had all of those community meetings, which you led, thank you very much, by the way, did you provide estimates as to how much this would increase their tax bills?
Yes, ma'am, I did. That was done on the basis of a number of different scenarios. We had different interest rates, we had different lengths of loans, and we had different levels of funding support divided, provided from different sources. So there are a number of different options, but yes, that was laid out for the residents.
And there was a range, but it was one that was pretty valid from a what we expected the road expenses to be, what we have done historically from a board perspective, from an interest rate perspective, should we opt to loan them the money. And so they were well aware. What kind of attendance did we have at these community meetings?
We had maybe 50% of the residents would be there at each one. We had maybe 50% of the residents would be there at each one, at least 50%.
And were they provided these costs when they were presented with the petitions?
Yes, they were, and each one of them were provided a copy of the presentation as well, so they had that information to take with them.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dayton.
Any other questions for Mr. Dayton? Mr. Dayton, I have two. I see that one of the lots is an undeveloped cemetery lot.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so are there projections on what that might be used for in the future? Is it owned by one of the residents that lives on Lynn Haven?
It is owned, I believe, by one of the original folks out there. It's in the Fritter family, who's a long-established family around here. The assessment on that lot, if that's the direction of your question, is $100, so there's no tax bill, so the formation of the service district will not result in any taxes on that cemetery lot.
Okay, and just for my own edification, about what is the range on those additional tax bills, if we get to that point?
So, I can take any number of examples, but if we take one at 20 years, and 2.5% interest, and that would be fully funded by the residents over 20 years, the cost would range from between $438 yearly to just under $2,500, and the $2,500 is the golf course lot itself. So as we move forward, and as opportunities present itself for sources of funding, then that would come down from there, but that's what it would be for full funding of the improvements by the residents.
Okay, that's what I needed to know, just needed a range. Okay, Ms. Maurer?
Just one quick question, would this particular road be eligible for matching by the state?
Yes, Ms. Maurer, it would be eligible for revenue sharing, and there is a point at which it could be developed along, and it would be eligible also for secondary six-year program funding.
Right, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Dayton, appreciate your work on that. Bring it back to the Rock Hill District Supervisor, Ms. Maurer.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of Ordinance 018-33.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any discussion by the Board?
Madam Chair, when this first came before the Board of Supervisors back in August of last year, one of the main questions that I got from my colleagues, and it was a very valid question, because Mr. Robison, here in the front row, has coordinated with the residents. He did come to that meeting, he did speak in favor of it as a representative of the residents. But one of the biggest concerns from my colleagues here on the Board was whether or not the other members or owners along Lynn Haven Lane understood what they were getting into. And so I appreciate all of you coming out in full force. I want to let everyone know that more than 25% of the owners along Lynn Haven Lane are represented in the audience, they have all spoken in favor, and I've gotten nothing but support for this particular service district, and I'm impressed that they are looking for a way to help themselves by trying to fund this road on their own, and I'm grateful for them working as hard and as diligently as they have.
So it's been almost exactly a year since this item was deferred, which I'm sure you all are aware of. So do we have a motion? Oh, yeah, we have a motion and a second, thank you. So with no other questions from the Board, please cast your vote. Tally the vote, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, moving along to our, hang on here, item number 27, under New Business Planning and Zoning. Oh, that's right, never mind. Hang on, I'm looking at a different sheet. Okay, we are now going to go into closed session. Mr. Snellings, if you could please read us in.
It may take a while, so bear with me. A resolution to authorize closed meeting, whereas the Board desires to hold a closed meeting for one, consultation with legal counsel, and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual litigation, Allen versus Stafford County, where such consultation or briefing is an open meeting, would adversely affect the negotiating and/or litigating posture of the Board. Two, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members regarding the Department of Justice's investigation and the establishment of cemeteries, the use of service districts, and the 2015 memorandum of understanding with Mosaic Choir Capital LLC, which are specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice. Three, discussion concerning a prospective business whose proposed inventory would solely fill at least 100,000 square feet of structure, at least 100,000 square feet in size, where no previous announcement has been made of the business interest in locating its facilities in the community. Whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A5, A7, and A8, such discussions may occur in closed session. So moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please cast your vote for closed session. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. The Board is now in closed session. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, item number, item number 27. Mr. Harvey will be making a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. May I have the presentation, please? This item for consideration is discussing the requirements to establish cemeteries in Stafford County, and it's pursuant to Ordinance 016-39, and it's regulations that reside within our zoning ordinance. The county adopted standards, or re-adopted standards for establishment of cemeteries back December 13th of 2016. Since that time, the county has heard from the Almazum Association of America, who owns a piece of property on Garrisonville Road, which they have said that they intend to establish a cemetery. The AMA has expressed some concerns about our county ordinance relative to their ability to establish a cemetery on their property. Back in October of last year, the Board adopted Resolution R 17-263, which requested the Planning Commission to revisit the standards for establishing cemeteries and make recommendations for any potential changes to the code. The code requirements in our zoning ordinance fall under Sections 15.2-2288.5 and Section 57-26 of the state code. We believe that it complies with those standards. However, with the provision of our code, Section 2839O, there are some additional standards that go above and beyond what the state requires. Specifically, a 900-foot setback from a terminal reservoir, which is a reservoir that provides drinking water in the county, and also any perennial stream that drains to that terminal reservoir. There's also a 900-foot setback from any private drinking water well. A minimum of 25 acres is the minimum size to establish a cemetery. That's been in the county code at least since 1975. Clearly stating the requirements to submit a site plan to establish a cemetery, regardless of the size of the cemetery. And a site plan would show compliance with stormwater management regulations, VDOT commercial entrance standards, and other county standards with regard to site development. Also, it would stipulate that anybody who wanted to establish a cemetery would have to go through a zoning approval process, similar to a zoning map amendment or a reclassification of a property. That is, a public hearing process involves both the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, and notice to adjacent owners. And the Board would potentially set conditions with that approval. The conditions could deal with the operation of the cemetery and other factors that could potentially affect the community. The Planning Commission, in reviewing the ordinance, established a committee, or subcommittee, and they've had three public meetings. During those public meetings, they went back and rereviewed some of the background information to see if it's still current regarding state code provisions, what other localities did as far as regulating the location of cemeteries. Prior analysis of eligible parcels, prior to the adoption of the ordinance, we did a map that showed agricultural zone properties in the county that were greater than 25 acres, and also at that time looked at a 900-foot buffer adjacent to perennial streams. They also looked at groundwater studies that had been presented as evidence with the prior adoption of the ordinance, and revisited those to see if there's any new evidence or literature in the community that could speak to groundwater impacts of cemeteries. The county has also implemented a process for evaluating our groundwater management issues in the Piedmont area of the county, and has developed a study which was reviewed by the Planning Commission. And also during the public meeting process with the committees, the Planning Commission heard testimony from the AMA regarding how they operate the current cemetery on Brook Road in the county, specifically how they deal with interments, and the use of a product they call Polyvolt, which is essentially a container that they will have the body interred in when it's buried. And then also, the committee heard testimony from Mr. Glenn Patterson regarding the community concerns of the nearby area, and the belief that the studies provided by the World Health Organization and other entities are helpful and determinative in forming our current ordinance. On May of this year, the Planning Commission voted to recommend that the code remain unchanged after their due diligence. The Community and Economic Development Committee of the Board considered this on July 10th, and recommended that be sent to the entire Board for further consideration. Since that time, the staff has done some additional work with regard to the mapping. As I mentioned earlier, the prior mapping looked at a 900-foot setback from perennial streams, but when the ordinance was ultimately adopted, it said 900-foot setback from perennial streams that drain to a terminal reservoir, a 900-foot setback off of a terminal reservoir, and a 900-foot setback from private wells. The mapping at that time did not include data on private wells, so staff has conducted further analysis to further verify that there are a number of eligible properties in the county for establishment of cemeteries in the future if they were to be pursued. Staff, in our analysis, estimates that there are 379 parcels that are eligible. The map attached to this slide does show the eligible parcels, they show up in a tan or beige color. It includes all or some portions of parcels. Those parcels were looked at as being zoned A1 agricultural, at least 25 acres in size, that there would be no residents within 900 feet of that area, or that they are within 900 feet of a terminal reservoir or stream drain to a reservoir. The code says that we base the 900 feet from the well location. At this present time, staff does not have enough detailed information from well records from the Health Department to be able to physically locate those specific locations. So staff in the analysis used the location of a home as the determinant of the 900-foot area. Generally speaking, a well will be located within 50 to 100 feet of the residence, so this may shift a little bit, but staff believes that this is pretty determinant of the wide variety of parcels that are available. We'll note that our analysis compared areas outside the urban services area where public water and sewer is not available, and also areas within the urban services area. We did not look at the house locations in particular for areas within the urban services area, because they either are currently or could be served by public water, and the 900-foot requirement would not apply. In the analysis, we also excluded existing cemeteries, government-owned property, and land that had conservation easements on it, because those conservation easements may preclude such activities as cemeteries. So staff, in conclusion, would ask the Board as to what are the next steps, if any, at this point in time.
Okay, as Mr. Harvey indicated, this did come out of the CEDC Committee on July 10th regarding this Ordinance 016-39, and it was brought back today just for discussion. There's no action that's required of the Board. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, don't see any comments or questions, so thank you for your presentation, Mr. Harvey.
You're welcome, Madam Chairman.
All right, with that, we will move right along to item number 28. Planning and Zoning, update the memorandum of agreement with the Tri-County City Soil and Water Conservation District. This is proposed Resolution R 18-195. Kathy Baker.
Good evening. Kathy Baker, Department of Planning and Zoning. Just going to give you a brief background. This is really a housekeeping item, updating a memorandum of understanding between the county and Tri-County City Soil/Water Conservation District. The existing MOU dates back to 1992. And recently, when Virginia Department of Environmental Quality conducted our five-year compliance review of the county's Chesapeake Bay Act program, they determined we needed to complete a proposed agricultural implementation plan which ensures water quality protection for agricultural properties. So one of the components of this compliance requires cooperation with Tri-County, as they're one of the entities that manages the data for the best management practices for agriculture. So in your package, you actually have a revised memorandum. Tri-County's Board met on Friday, they had a few recommended changes, and those have been incorporated in your add-on folder. The MOU largely establishes just a basis of cooperation between the county and Tri-County, and it will identify the responsibilities as we, over the next few years, work to get conservation assessments and conservation plans for our agricultural properties, where they will do things such as buffers, timber vegetated buffers to our resource protection areas and such. So our Tri-County representatives had to leave this evening, but if you all have questions for them, we can prompt them and get answers to you. This is slated to come back to your September 4th meeting, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Baker on this MOU? Ms. Maurer?
Madam Chair, without a injection, is it appropriate to put this on the consent agenda next time?
Okay, and appreciate you updating this MOU from 1992. Okay, we'll see that on the consent. Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item, if it's okay with the Board, in the essence of time, if we could move this to the September 4th meeting, is there anybody that would be opposed to moving the bylaws discussion? Ms. McLendon, anything else we need to do on that front?
No, Madam Chairman, there's no action required on this, so staff will make note, and we'll move it to September 4th.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item is item number 30, and I appreciate the Sheriff's Department coming back for this one. Discuss revisions to the Board, oh, excuse me, discuss compensation and classification of the county's emergency communications officers. All right, Sheriff Decatur, you're getting a lot of press time today.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the Board. David Decatur, Sheriff of Stafford County, proud sheriff. And I'm here to talk briefly about the challenges that we've had in the past, and we currently are experiencing with our communication officers in our Emergency Operations Center, Emergency Communication Center. So as you all know, back in August of last year, 2017, I came before the Public Safety Committee and explained the challenges that we were having, trying to keep our staffing levels up in our Emergency Communication Center. And so we came up with an approach. We had a short-term solution and a long-term solution. The short-term solution was to create a stipend that would keep for a year, would hold some of our people in place, hoping that it would work, which it of our people in place, hoping that it would work, which it has worked. Some of those people with the years of experience who can function independently, and they are those folks who have that institutional knowledge that you really need to keep on board in an organization. So that was approved. The board approved that, and some of the challenges, just bringing it back to memory, you know, we have people who are in those positions that are just leaving for better-paying jobs. Of course, we're in a unique position where we're located geographically because we have Northern Virginia who pays more money and they offer additional things that we're currently not offering. And also, the private sector certainly isn't helping either because the economy's doing so well, you can go and work for a company and make more money, and you don't have to worry about working evenings or nighttime and on weekends, and you're compensated with more money. So there's a number of challenges, and a couple of other things we identified too is that we were trying to find a way to encourage people who would work the evening shifts and nighttime, because many people don't want to work coming to a job working at nighttime. So we identified that we needed some kind of shift differential pay to entice them, you know, to compensate them for working those types of hours. And at the time, we had about 50% of our positions were vacant or ineffective, and what I mean by ineffective is there's so much training that goes into bringing a communicator up to a level where they're able to do everything that they need to do. For an example, when you first come in, you learn how to call take, and you're taking calls, and then you're putting that information in and passing it on to a dispatcher who's fully trained who can get that information out, that call out to either fire and rescue or to the sheriff's office. And then you move up to another level where you're able to do some of the state and national level work, which is called NCICBs and all those kinds of things you've heard about. And there's still, there's numbers of levels that they have to go through and be certified, which is mandated by the state and is required for them to be fully trained. So those are some of the things that we identified. So short-term solution worked, and it's getting ready to expire. And the long-term solution we came up with was a pay study, which the county commissioned a market study for emergency communication center, which went into effect in fall 2017 and was just completed of May of this year. And the study involved about nine different competitive jurisdictions and comparative jurisdictions. We have ones that we normally are compared to, and then the reality, there are ones that we compete with, you know. So like Albemarle County is one that we're compared to, but of course, we don't compete because they're near Charlottesville, as you know, and they're not, that's not a jurisdiction we normally lose people to. So we had the study done, and there were nine of our competitive comparative jurisdictions that were brought into the study, and there were, we were, the study found and identified that there were agencies that had multiple levels of certifications and levels for the telecommunications, as I mentioned earlier, you know, as they progressed through, they climbed kind of that ladder. So that's one thing they identified. We also found that we were 29% below the market median during the survey, so we were really far behind. And of course, now keeping in mind a couple of the places that we were compared, that we are competing with and compared to that were part of the survey was Fairfax. And we certainly understand that we don't expect to receive the same pay as they do in Northern Virginia, but we're looking to be competitive and to offer some of the similar things. And we've done some things with the numbers, and later on, you'll be able to look at those when you have time and see that it's not a big difference. And we also identified that there are those shift differential pays that are being offered to all these other jurisdictions that we don't currently offer. So that was identified. And then we, as the sheriff's office, took a look at about 16 different competitive and comparative localities as well that were effective as July 1st of this year, and looking at those comparatives, we fell way below when it comes to the number of grades for communications officer and the pay scale. So there's a number of areas that we're just behind on, and we're hoping that some of the solutions that we've come up with, working with HR, working with the budget office, and working with the county administrator's office, we're hoping that some of these solutions to this big problem that we're having, keeping people in our emergency operations center, will remedy, hopefully, some of these problems. Now, it's no secret across the country, you know, there's not, this is a struggle going on across the U.S. where communications officers are leaving emergency operations centers for a number of reasons. As I mentioned before, the economy's doing great, they can get better-paying jobs. So we're just trying to come up with a way to attract people because it is very critical, as you all know, we have to have people who are trained to take those calls. And then what happens when we fall short with our staffing, the problem is exacerbated because we have people who are having to work overtime, and they get fatigued, and they get jaded and burnt out, and then that creates even a bigger problem. So for us, it's so critical doing that job that you have to have people with, you know, who are focused and aren't overworked. So the study recommends that we take and bring ourselves up to the comparable agencies with multiple grade levels. Right now, we have two, and we need to extend that out. So it gives the communications officer incentive to work to the next level so we can move them along. Also, the pay grades need to be changed, and the evening and night shift differential pay is also something that was recommended. And of course, I concur with those recommendations, and I believe that it's the way to go. And we, of course, we have more additional information, so for sake of time, I won't go into all the details, but the plan that we have working, as I mentioned, working with budget and Mr. Foley and Mr. Presley and the HR folks, we found that we could phase in our plan on September, and by moving it 50% up, and then that would, that's estimated cost of about $236,000 salary for that 12 months of phase in, and then come July, the second phase, that would cost about $120,000. And then we'd have to work out and do some figures, which we can get to you about the overtime. And so I think that coupled with being able to offer the shift differential pay, because we have folks who work the evening hours and midnight hours, and being able to give them a stipend which would be a dollar an hour for the evening and then a dollar fifty for nights when they're actually working. So that's kind of the solution that we've come up with, and we think that, not for sure how effective it's going to be, but you know, at least what we're doing is we're being competitive and we're offering, you know, Stafford County an opportunity to be at least attractive, you know, compared to some of our other jurisdictions.
Well, I really appreciate you bringing this matter to Mr. Foley and the board last year, and we had a short-term fix, because as you know, when people call, dial 911, they want an answer. They don't want a recording, they want an answer, and they want a human being. So, and I appreciate you moving forward and being proactive on this, so great job. Unfortunately, it all costs money, but that's our life right now, and that's the situation that you're in when you're trying to have effective 911 dispatchers out there. So with that, does anybody have any questions for the sheriff? I have one. Oh, Mr. Foley.
Just add that on the money front, you all had planned for the impact of this, so we do have money budget implemented. It won't even take the entire amount. We've worked really closely with the sheriff on this, and we think this is a good solution to proceed.
So I'm just curious, if you took Fairfax out of that equation where you referenced 29, we were 29% below, if you took Fairfax out, where were we?
It didn't make much of a difference at all.
Interesting. Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And one thing I'd like to add, I know I sound like a broken record, but any endeavor that's worthwhile, it does take, as I mentioned over and over again, partnerships. I want to thank Mr. Foley and our budget folks and everyone. I mean, it's a collaborative effort that makes this happen, and when we're dealing with money, you know, there's so many competing interests, and so we're just grateful for all the help that we're getting.
Yeah, so maybe at some point, maybe in the fall, if you could let us know if this was effective and if it's helping.
Yes, ma'am.
That would be great to know to just get an update. So if the board supports this, then it would probably come back on the consent agenda for next month? Anybody opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you for standing by after our closed meeting.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, we have item number 31, and I don't, I hate to ask you this, Ms. Kraus, would you be offended if we pushed this to the September 4th meeting in the essence of time? Or?
No, that's fine. It's at Mr. Snelling's discretion. It was his item.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that in the interest of time, we can move that. I would also, while we're on the subject, if I could ask the county attorney to make a presentation, I want to be representatives at that meeting concerning this housing authority law. And the reason I brought this up is because I'm getting emails from constituents about creating a housing authority, and I want to find out what powers they have. And based on what I read, it's quite extensive, but I would like, if you don't mind, to have a presentation for the board on the 4th as to what they can and cannot do.
We can provide that presentation.
And of course, Ms. Kraus can handle the other side of it as far as what alternatives there are, what other things we can do if we don't do the housing authority. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay, so with that, we have no other business until 7 o'clock. County Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Dudenhaffer is going to give the invocation tonight, and Supervisor Snellings is going to lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
Our Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support. As we begin this meeting, help us to engage in meaningful discussions, allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, that we may make the decisions that benefit the citizens of Stafford County, and continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This evening, we have members of the North Stafford Rotary Club here to talk about its recent Flags for Heroes display that they did for us recently. Would Renee Laws, President of the North Stafford Rotary, please come to the podium?
We just wanted to let you guys know how much we appreciate everything Stafford County's done for us. Every year, this is our third year doing the program. It was a huge success, and it was our first time doing a ceremony, and we thank you, Chairman, and Mrs. Shelton and Mr. Dudenhaffer for attending that ceremony along with the sheriff. So I'm ready for the computer?
Computer, please.
Ah, okay, I'll just let you do the clicking. Flags for Heroes, North Stafford Rotary. You can go next. Okay, so the program is basically our campaign. We put out 180 American flags and 20 service flags. Each of those is sponsored by an individual or a business in the community, and we're bringing awareness and showing our gratefulness to all of our heroes here in the Stafford County and surrounding areas. Our Rotary District loved our idea so much that they adopted it district-wide, and there are now 56 clubs that have been encouraged to do the same, and a lot of them have already started doing it in their areas. So each year, we meet up with Travis and Company here in this building. We talk about our plans, the days that we want to put the flags up, we coordinate all of the paperwork that we have to have and everything else. And you can see in the pictures there, all the hard work, they bring out the little golf cart, and we put up all of our flags, and you can go next. And so the sponsors, we've got business sponsors and individual sponsors, and those are our banners from the past few years. And then this year, we did our ceremony, the North Stafford High School JROTC helped us out, our interact club was there, several of our supervisors, the sheriff. And in the center there, you can see, that's the American Legion holding their Memorial Day ceremony, which they use our flags as a backdrop every year. So we, and they were one of our sponsors. So they're amazing. Okay, next. And there's the impressive display. I guess most of you have seen this, as you drive down Route 1 in Stafford County. It's quite impressive, and it gets a lot of attention, and when we started publishing the pictures, that's when the rest of the district caught on. They were like, wait, whoa, we want to do this. And next is our last one, special thank you. We want to bring up our Rotarians and bring up the workers that helped set up this year. Oh, and you can see the pup. We have a little appreciative pup. One of the Stafford County residents dropped her, dropped on by, took a picture with her dog and sent it to our Facebook page to show off her little dog that was enjoying the display. So I've got Roberta Schreiber, who is our chairman for the Flags for Heroes this year, Bob Solomon, who is one of our past presidents, and his wife Kathy. So they're helping me present the certificates tonight.
Okay, and being recognized from the Department of Parks and Recreation and Community Facilities, and if you could please come up, that would be great, Chris Atkins, Garrett Goines, Mike Filippi, Travis Sullivan, Tim Trice, and Josh Wine.
Do you guys want to come up and make your certificate? And then we'll, we'll take a big picture.
Do you guys want to?
So, yeah, we got to take a picture, and.
And this is something for you guys.
Oh, oh, wow. Me, thank you so much. So I just want to thank North Stafford Rotary. I mean, everybody that you've incorporated into this is all a part of the community, but it doesn't happen, as you showed in your PowerPoint, there are a lot of steps along the way, and you just don't snap your fingers and magic and it happens. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of the entire board because it was an awesome display of the American flag and all the service flags. So. Quick question, was the ground hard as a brick, or had we had some rain at that point in time?
It was still hard.
It was still hard.
And I will add that every single, oh, gosh, every single time that we put the flags in or take them out, is it not the hottest day of the year? It's the hottest day.
Always. Do you all have anything you'd like to add?
My first wife and I, my only wife, you can't afford anymore, we were up in Northern Minnesota for her reunion for graduating from high school, and I met some Rotarians outside the grocery store, and they had a fundraiser, and I brought up our Flags for Heroes program down here, and luckily, I had my phone, had some photos, so I think it's going to infect Northern Minnesota also.
Great, great.
That's fantastic.
The ground might have been forgiving, but the concrete was not. There's a lot of concrete under that dirt out there.
Kathy, I can add, it really not. Gentlemen, did you guys want to add anything? Do you guys have anything? Want to say anything? No?
All right, well, thank you. Let's give them a big round of applause, and thank you for everything y'all did.
Thank you.
Love Rotary.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for your help. I know you're helping cleanse. Thank you so much. Appreciate your efforts.
And now, we are going to have a presentation by Adam Lynch with the Friends of the Rappahannock. Mr. Lynch, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman Bovkey, and the rest of the board for inviting us out. So I'm Adam Lynch, I'm from Friends of the Rappahannock. Behind me is Kathleen Harrigan, our executive director, so thanks again for bringing us out. So Friends of the Rappahannock is a grassroots environmental organization whose aim is to preserve the health and scenic beauty of the Rappahannock River. We were founded in 1985 and now have a full-time staff of about eight, as well as quite a few part-time employees and a lot of volunteers. So I want to tell you guys today about something called our Rappahannock River Report Card, which we have been producing and now are sharing the results of for about the last year and a half. year and a half. First off, though, I do want to thank our Public Works Department, the other administrative department of Stafford County. Friends of the Rappahannock has worked with them for years. I'm just one of the more recent examples of that. We do a lot of river cleanups and a lot of stormwater work with them. So one example of a really cool project is one thing we're doing tomorrow, actually, is very timely. We are going to be working at Stafford, at the, sorry, the historic port of Falmouth Park, to help clear out with a group of 45 volunteers from Mary Washington University. A lot of that driftwood has been sitting there and keeping us away from our river. So we're excited to get out there with Chris Stevens and the rest of the Parks and Rec staff to do that. But yes, today, the report card. So this project began about a year and a half ago with a grant win from the Community Foundation of the Rappahannock River Region, based in Fredericksburg. The idea with this report card was to reinforce this idea that we all live downstream. That's a concept that we come back to very often with Friends of the Rappahannock. That's the idea that what we put into the river, and what we put into our water bodies here in our area, flows downstream to other people, in the same way that we are at the mercy of people upstream of us. We receive the water that they put in the ground. We drink that water. We are reliant on it for our seafood, our recreation. There's a lot of ways that we're interconnected as all members of the same watershed. So the Rappahannock River Report Card was an idea that we wanted to quantify water quality indices for 11 different tributary subwatersheds in the Fredericksburg area, including the Stafford, Spotsylvania, Caroline, King George, and the city of Fredericksburg, in order to track those different water quality indicators on a geographic and a time level. So we're hoping to come back years from now, hopefully not too many years from now, and revisit these numbers and the metrics that we've looked up, so that we can get an idea of what ways this river and our watershed is improving, what ways it's getting worse, and then come up with some solutions for how individual citizens, their families, and our organization, or our government leaders and other organization leaders, they can do on a higher level to do that. So that's why I'm here today. As I said, the report card looked at 11 different tributaries, seven of which are in Stafford County, on 16 different indicators, which broke into four categories: human health, stream ecology, community engagement, and land use. Human health, we looked at things like bacteria levels in water, and fish consumption advisories based on chemicals in fish tissue. Overall, the Rappahannock, in this middle Rappahannock area, received a B in that category. Stream ecology, the second category, looked at things like the state of the riparian buffer, which is a forest buffer surrounding streams and rivers. Riparian land use protection, so there are things like how many acres of land around these streams and rivers are protected from development that may be harmful to the ecology of the streams and rivers. And aquatic community degradation. So when you have issues with water quality, that can have negative impacts on the insects and other organisms that inhabit these streams. Got a C+ in that category. Community engagement, it's the third category. We looked at things like signage, how many of our stream crossings are marked to make sure that our community knows that there's a stream in their backyard, that they are aware that these bodies are here, increases their awareness of it, makes them want to do something about it. How well are we allowing our public to access their streams and rivers? Do we have parks and trails along these bodies of water to make sure these people can get back there and establish a sense of ownership of those streams? Watershed education is actually one of the bright spots of this study. We found that really a lot of the Stafford County schools are doing a great job of enrolling their students in field trips at Friends of the Rappahannock, a little bit of plug for us, but also we included that as a metric because we can track it well. So there was some really, really good news, and as a part-time environmental educator, I got to see the results of that up close, and it's really, really special. So, thank you. And finally, we looked at things like river cleanups, volunteer engagement, ways that we got our people out on the river, get their hands dirty, get people excited on the ground, whether we were making sure to distribute those among the tributaries of our watershed in this area. So I will name off a few of the tributaries from the study that may, you may recognize as from Stafford County. We looked at Deep Run, Horse Pen Run, Clayborne Run, Falls Run, Muddy Creek, and White Oak Run from the Stafford area. So on the community engagement side, I neglected to mention, got a C-, you'll notice that these grades are going down. The final topic was land use. For this category, the tributaries in our area received a D+. We saw some concerning signs in the land use category, especially in the southern area of Stafford in our river watershed. We looked at things like impervious surfaces, how many acres of parking lots, roofs, that sort of thing, relative to the amount of forest cover. Certainly some alarming results in that category. We also looked at protections of land use. What are the current status? How many acres of land use in the categories like open space and forest? Are we protecting those resources? And in many cases, the answer is were no. And finally, are we incorporating best management practices, which are things like agricultural, green agriculture devices, like keeping cattle out of our streams, using cover crops, those sorts of things that lighten our environmental and our water quality impacts from our farms? Residential ones, like rain barrels and rain gardens, those sorts of things, how many of those are we employing? A D+ is a pretty low score. There are some concerning signs that we are seeing a spike in impervious surfaces in our, many of these tributary subwatersheds. As I said, impervious surfaces are any hard surface that prevents water from naturally infiltrating the ground. That's a big deal, because in a natural system, in a forested system especially, rainwater, when it falls, can naturally infiltrate the ground almost immediately, and it goes into something really, really cool called groundwater. And groundwater is almost like a Brita filter under our feet that's free. We don't have to do anything, we just allow this water to enter the ground, and it naturally is cleaned by percolating through rocks and soil. When we build impervious surfaces, we completely circumvent this process. Instead of allowing it to go through that natural purification process, we are preventing it from doing that, and we are channelizing it directly into our streams, and that carries everything along with it that it picks up along the way. So we're talking about pollutants, we're talking about oils, salts, nutrients, bacteria, everything that comes off of our hard surfaces has no chance to actually be purified using that system, and ends up in our streams and rivers. And that is at the core of many of the problems that we identified in this river report card. We like to say that water quality is downstream of land use, so that's what I wanted to drive home today. It's a free resource. It's a lot cheaper to allow our nature to purify our water for us than to go in and use expensive purification processes in our drinking water and other water sources. So we also developed some recommendations, which was another component of this report card project. I'm going to name off a few that individual community members and families and homeowners can do to help our river get an A. You may reduce or eliminate fertilizer use on your property. Introducing too many nutrients into a biological system causes algae blooms and other negative impacts on those bodies of water, which helps the, which hurts the aquatic insects, which are the, really the foundation of the aquatic ecosystem. Properly maintaining a septic system can reduce the amount of leakage that gets, gets into our bodies of water, which strikes at that bacteria, that human health challenge. If we don't do that well, we're putting ourselves and our children at risk of health problems as a result of bacteria in our water bodies. Working with your local soil and water conservation district to install rain barrels, really, really cheap and easy way to reuse the water and not only improve our water quality footprint, but also to reduce the amount of water that we're using from our municipal system. And also rain gardens, which are a cool way to sort of treat your rainwater. As soon as it leaves your gutter, you can allow it to infiltrate the ground and take advantage of that really great free natural Brita filter, we call it groundwater. Pick up after your pet. Surprisingly enough, animal waste contributes in major ways to bacteria in our bodies of water. So just picking up and having things like pet waste kiosks at key public sites can really make a big difference. And also organize a stream or river cleanup in your local community. We've been really lucky to have a lot of great volunteers volunteer for us. We have been, since the end of this report card, have kind of ramped up our efforts. This year, we've hit, since the report card came out, England Run and Falls Run, and tomorrow we're going to be at, at Falmouth Beach. So also some recommendations that our leaders, including and not just restricted to the Stafford Board, can take to help us improve and help our river get an A. One way is we can encourage developers and private landowners to permanently protect large contiguous tracts of buildable open space. That's the best way to protect our resources, is to make sure they don't get built on. We need to protect especially our forests. If we don't protect our forests, we're not going to have anything left. Also farms and agricultural lands. You know, they do produce pollution, there is pollution related to agriculture, but I think, given the chance, we can work with those farmers to help them reduce their impacts through cover crops, through cattle exclusion. There's a lot of things we can do while we're preserving our open spaces to make sure that those environmental impacts are lessened. Second, we can implement legislation to focus new construction in low-impact areas such as redevelopment sites, and away from sensitive areas, including greenfield sites. This is one area that we think we can help you guys with. We can help identify sensitive areas and areas where the impact of those developments on our water would be less than in certain other areas, so we would love to help in that respect. Third, we can continue efforts to identify and repair sanitary sewer leaks in the Rappahannock tributaries, as well as encourage ways to maintain those systems to prevent future leaks. So I was encouraged to see the agenda for today, covered several things that got at that, so, great job, guys. Fourth, we can ensure that our develop proposals, development proposals, respect the Chesapeake Bay Act guidelines along perennial streams and rivers within the 100-foot resource protection area, and even wider, if we would like to do that. We should continue supporting the Tri-County City Soil and Water Conservation District in their cost share efforts, again, going back to treating our residential and our agricultural lands, and reducing our water quality footprint. One way to do that is through that Soil and Water Conservation District. We want to, these last two are very low-hanging fruit, we think, install road signage along stream and road crossings to increase awareness of our streams. When you put a, a sign and a name on a water body, people tend to take it more personally when they see it, develop a connection with that creek. I grew up in Spotsy County, crossed over Massaponix Creek, I don't want in, hundreds of times, and I had no idea that's what it was, until I started working for Friends of the Rappahannock. I think knowing that creek had a name would have made me think a little bit harder about letting my dog do fester in the yard for a few days, those sorts of things. I just think that those sorts of things happen a little better when we really kind of name our streams and rivers. Only 15 more road crossings in Stafford County will give you guys a perfect score on road crossing signage. So that's something I would love to talk to you guys and work with your Public Works Department to maybe make that happen as Friends of the Rappahannock. And finally, storm drain markers. When, when you got that can of paint in your hand, and you walk up to the storm drain, thinking about maybe dumping it out, and you see that cute little crab on there, maybe you'll think twice about it. So reminding people at every storm drain marker, or many storm drain markers in high trafficked areas, that pollution starts there is a powerful concept. So we would love to work with the county on getting some of those markers installed at key places around the county. That is all for my presentation. I wanted to let you guys know that the full results of our river report card are available at riverfriends.org, that's our website, slash rap report card, R-A-P-P report card. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Snellings.
Thank you for that presentation. I'm getting a lot of requests from constituents because my district borders the Rappahannock.
You're on the Hartwood District, right?
Correct. About dredging. What, does the Friends of the Rappahannock, have you taken a position on dredging the river? Is it a good thing, bad thing, cost, et cetera?
Well, the downside of dredging the river, from an environmental perspective, is that it would stir up a lot of nasty pollutants that are buried deep in that sediment, but I can't say for certain that we've taken a position on that.
The other thing is, I noticed, and this is Morford County Administrator, I occasionally walk the trail in Fredericksburg, the Fredericksburg, the River Canal Trail, and I noticed the city is now, in addition to the little doggy poo things, they've also got trash bags and things you can pick up trash with.
Yeah, I love it.
As you're walking, and I don't know, I think that might be something we might want to look at and put in our trails, because you see people all the time, they're just picking up trash, and they get around to the end, and drop it in a little container.
That's a fantastic idea.
It was a great idea.
I, they did that without us, so.
Great idea.
We'd be happy to, I think, help you guys, especially with new trails going in along the river, that would be a great component of that.
And this is the...
That's it.
The label, if you've seen this, on stormwater drains.
If you haven't, we're coming for you.
Right. Okay, Mr. Cohen.
Yes, thank you very much. A couple things, I just, I'm in the midst of emailing while you were talking, but get to me, one of the things that I've raised, one with Ms. Shelton and some other people, is trying to get the schools involved with stormwater retention ponds and, and rain gardens, because there's a good number of environmental clubs and environmental classes that probably would like to see that, because it's, it's hands-on, and it could actually take the theory and see it in practice. So we can get together on that, as well as some other issues. And maybe you want to reach out to the school board about presenting an option, you know, presenting to them this information as well.
Absolutely. Yes, we would love that opportunity.
Any other questions for Mr. Lynch? Thank you so much for coming out and doing your presentation, and thank you for Ms. Carrigan for coming out to support.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have presentations by the public. If you would like to comment tonight, please remain courteous and respectful to members of the audience and to the board. It's important to keep track of your time at the podium, so that everyone who wishes to speak will have time to address the board. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. Please speak slowly and clearly into the microphone and begin by stating your name and address. Please refer to the light on the podium to monitor the time of your presentation. Green indicates the start of your remarks, yellow indicates that you have one minute to summarize your comments, and red obviously means your time is up. So if you're here to actually speak about the one item that we have on as a public hearing this evening, I request that you wait until that public hearing. And right now, I'm going to call those people that have already signed up to speak, and then we'll just take people from the audience. So the first speaker card that I have is Ron Scott.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Ron Scott. I live at Red 11 Ridge Point Lane in the Ridge Point subdivision. I'm the current HOA president. And as the president of the HOA, we have come across an issue with stormwater management and/or V-ditch drainage ditches. The HOA has just spent over $18,000 to have a V-ditch repaired that ran back along the backside of one of the homeowner's properties. We're extremely concerned that as a conveyance for stormwater runoff, why a homeowner and/or a community should have to maintain and repair, or do any of that type of work, and suffer the, the consequences and the costs, because it just, it doesn't make sense. The, the V-ditch drainage is there to provide a method for stormwater to run off in a safe manner, and to keep it from flooding back up on the roads, or causing other damage to the road surfaces. So why is not the county and/or VDOT responsible for making those type of repairs? And we got like, one, we got like four or five other V-ditches that are in need of repair, and as a HOA and a homeowner, I don't think we should have to cough up, continue cough-up monies to make those repairs. I really think it, it should be at the county or state level to maintain those, because they serve the general public as a method to, for the stormwater runoff. So that's my issue tonight. You'll hear from a homeowner back here next, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Scott. Do you have anything else?
That's it. Any questions?
We're, we're not allowed to, sorry. But we more than, we're more than happy to chat with you offline. Jacob Pastewick.
My name is Jacob Pastewick. I live with my wife at 34 Ridge Point Lane in the Ridge Point subdivision of South Stafford. Tonight, I've come to speak about a festering issue that has taken over a year now without any confident resolution. I'm speaking about the wild, wild west that has aged community drainage infrastructure, dating back, in my case, from the late 1990s. This, this drainage infrastructure is now failing. This drainage infrastructure is now failing on my particular lot and others in my community, and from I understand from VDOT, all over the state, this is an issue. In my case, the community V-ditch that's draining VDOT road water, as well as anybody upstream of mine, actually has holes opening up along the sides, and I have a risk of sinkholes and issues there. You can sink a pipe in there and see how deep it's going. So I have a stream running underneath where there's supposed to be the stream. In my case, it's the concrete V-ditches, like I said, that happened to dip outside of the VDOT right-of-way and onto my private property as final approach to stormwater management catchment basement that collects upstream community water and VDOT road runoff. These V-ditches are within VDOT easements, but VDOT will not address issues unless they deem the road compromised. So the heck with the private property owner's property being compromised, only if VDOT's road's compromised do they really care. So the concern here is that the impacts of erosion, V-ditch undermining, and sinkholes on private property with no clear language ever established to set responsibility over maintenance of these expensive pieces of infrastructure. Neither the county, VDOT, or the HOA have been clearly established as responsible party for this. So the problem is, nobody wants it. It's a hot potato, and then everything seems to, well, you might have to take care of it, private property owner. So the single homeowner is faced with the prospect of having to foot the bill to fix community infrastructure. I'm not running a charity here to take care of VDOT road water, everybody upstream of mine, and that's a big issue for myself and everybody else that's having these issues. We have enough to worry about. I have to worry about a new roof on my house and take care of the house and upkeep of that, not community drainage. So the cost to inspect, re-engineer, and reconstruct at sole homeowners' expense is a problem, and to what standard? I would stress that this was installed prior to my home actually being constructed in 1999. So for larger communities and VDOT road runoff benefit, what are the impacts to the Chesapeake Bay, also if you consider all the sediment that's being kicked out as these areas are eroding away? So ultimately, what I'm seeking this evening is, I would urge the board to seek whatever legislative effort necessary to fix this emerging issue, so citizens need not be burdened with this headache anymore. Residential lots ought not to be approved with such a heavy lift attached to them. Certainly don't come up in home inspections, and I ask the question. This should not be a home inspection and home buy issue. This issue is making me question whether I should have ever even decided to buy in this community in the first place. It's a sick feeling, and I like my neighbors and neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Clifford.
So I didn't coordinate with those past two speakers, but, good evening, Board. My name is Chris Clifford. I live at 11 Wallace Farms Lane. On August 12th, I experienced the failure of stormwater management culvert pipe on my lot. Massive amounts of dirt, gravel, and stone were washed away, and the integrity of my driveway and the four-foot diameter culvert pipe which runs under it have been compromised. The four-foot pipe is approximately 40 feet from the street, and I have three estimates to fix it. All of them are over $10,000. While I believe it was a vent that exposed a design flaw in our stormwater system in Wallace Farms. Stormwater on the roadside ditch along Wallace Farms Lane, at 10 Wallace Farms Lane, a three-foot culvert runs under the road, diverting all the water to my side of the road, okay? Along with that three-foot culvert, my upstream neighbor has a three-foot culvert, and I have a one-foot culvert that runs under my driveway. Altogether, total 17.5 square foot of area, pipe flowing into my four-foot pipe, which is only 12 feet square foot area. That's simple physics. My pipe isn't going to take that flow. That's a design flaw. Somebody approved that, somebody designed it, and now I'm stuck with it, all right? I've checked all the stormwater around our neighborhood, and none of them violate that simple calculation, pi r squared, flow coming out, flow coming in, except at my location, my four-foot pipe getting flow from these three pipes. In my, somebody, not me, I've had conversations with Scott Ray and Jason Towery. They've explained to me the requirements and standards that are in place for the stormwater management. I'm not an expert in stormwater management, although I am an engineer, but I fail to understand how any standard or requirement could allow upstream pipes to produce more flow than a downstream pipe can handle. I've had conversations with Mr. Robert Waslow. He advised me that when I replace my pipe, I should do, I should put a five-foot pipe in there, based on his calculations that he's done over the past couple of days, okay? He also told me that he had no jurisdiction over developers on private land, so even if he felt that he could enforce a five-foot, he couldn't make the developer put a five-foot pipe in there. That's wrong. I was shocked when I, when I heard that. When I bought my house eight years ago, I assumed that the county did their due diligence. They put the proper technical rigor into reviewing subdivision plans. They didn't. Now I'm stuck with a $10,000 bill to fix this problem. In conclusion, I'm here for two reasons. First, to point out that I believe that there are flawed standards that have been used and are in use by the county today. I urge the county to revisit their design criteria and review approval and enforcement process, so that other county residents don't get stuck with my mess. I also, I believe most of Stafford County is counting on the county to do their job. Secondly, I'd also like to ask the county to review my situation and determine if there's anything they can do for me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next one is Andrew Munjen.
My name is Andrew Munjen. I'm at 2770 Brook Road, and two things. One, on the heels of the Friends of the Rappahannock, I would like to request that the county consider funding for the Purchase of Development Rights program, which I inquired about a little less than a year ago, and was told that there is a recent spate, a recent iteration of that program, and that there were no further plans, no future plans in the works. I believe that that's an invaluable tool at the county's disposal to protect large contiguous tracts, and the Transfer Development Rights program is a nice alternative, but it kind of, it's robbing Peter to pay Paul, in my mind. Secondly, the Telecommunications Subcommittee, I've been very involved with them, corresponding back and forth, attending the meetings, and one of the contractors at the county uses for cell towers and such is Milestone Communications. It's been two months since I was told that I would have a contract delivered to consider putting a tower on my property. Everybody on Marlborough Point and along the northern section of Brook needs an improved solution to high-speed internet. It's a big, big challenge. I mean, I'm looking at a $20,000 bill from Comcast, and that's just, I mean, I got to figure something out. I hope there's another solution, and I would, I'm happy to assign a portion of my property to Milestone or whoever it ends up being, because it's been two months and I haven't seen anything. So whatever pressure the board is able to exert as the customer for Milestone, as the contract holder, please do, because I've been told repeatedly that it's because of issues with their legal department. That's the same department that would deal with you guys if there's a problem, so you have a much bigger voice than I do. And I would appreciate it used on behalf of everybody along Brook Road and Marlborough Point to try and kick, get this thing kick-started a little bit, because, you know, most people don't have that, quite the same bill, but none of us have small bills from Comcast. I promise you that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the board chambers like to address the board? If so, please come down.
Just so you know, Resolution 82-341 is why I don't get a county water and sewer bill. So you ask this board to do anything, you're wasting your time. The best advice I can give you is, when your taxes come up, you appeal to the Board of Equalization, then after they say that your taxes shouldn't go up because you have, let's see, how did you put it, design flaws, because they're all over this county. You know, I have a new acronym for VDOT. It's called the Virginia Dumb on Transportation, and I think we need a commission to replace the Utilities Commission, and that's what you should name it. You talk about forest cover. Go down Shelton Shop Road and look at what they did. They ripped it all up. And when you go to the market on Sunday mornings, you'll find boats, work vehicles, all kinds of things on impervious surfaces, because these people don't know what green space is. They don't care about groundwater and how it does it. And I'll tell you what happened at my real house. Twice, my bathtub, and I recommend to every citizen, fill your bathtub, because you're never going to see that you have impure water. The second time it happened, I sent an email, and I blast the whole county leadership with it. And then I get a response that says, "I'm sorry." Well, sorry's a board game, but I do appreciate the two guys who came out and cleared out my water on my, over a whole weekend, and even came out on Saturday to make sure it was good. So the Chesapeake Bay watershed, I've been an activist here for 25 years, Friends on the Rappahannock. I'd like to see you come here more. There are no such thing as issues, unless you talk to these board members, they're all opportunities. So change your mindset and try to figure this out as opportunities. Another thing that citizens need to know is, staff continuously picks low bidder and low quality. Let's see, Resolution 18-203, they never research the companies that are there. Same thing with HVACs with R18-188. I don't know where southern air comes from, but it ain't in Stafford County. You know, you want us to live, work, and play in Stafford County? Well, the last 18 months, I play every day.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Please come forward. Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public comment period. We have one public hearing tonight. It is item number 33, Finance and Budget, Authorize the Issuance of Virginia Public School Authority VPSA Bonds. Proposed Resolution R18-191.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Andrea Light, Budget Director for Stafford County. The Board advertised a public hearing at their July meeting to consider issuance of VPSA in accordance with the CIP for school construction. Any action is, at this time, is not necessary, as this is not time-sensitive, and the Board can revisit this in September.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Light? Kind of had a conversation about this during committee today, so I'm not surprised. All right, thank you. At this point in time, I'm going to open the public hearing for this item. Is there anyone that would like to address the board on the VPSA bond matter?
All right, anything that deals with the schools, I disapprove of for two reasons. Number one, you continually to have church services in our public schools, which is a direct violation of Thomas Jefferson, James Madison, and James Monroe, who were very clear about separation of church and state. The other thing that needs to be addressed with county schools, so people understand, next year, they're going to start school early. This is why you need to really hold the reins on this stuff. Whoever voted for this stuff, they're taking away, like the teenagers told me in my neighborhood, you're taking away three weeks of their jobs doing lawn work and other things throughout the community, maybe even Friends of the Rappahannock. I'll have to ask him. But it's, it's really sad that we're making these decisions and we have no air conditioning in our school buses. So anything with the school system, I think, needs to be really looked at. And just so you all know, my unit is empty on August 25th, which is Saturday. I'm thinking of moving into it, and you already know I have my campaign sticker. It says Waldowski 2019, just to annoy you.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
Andrew Munjen, 2770 Brook Road. In light of, my understanding at least, the last time this issue came up, there was a decision to utilize funds that were previously allocated for transportation to, and diverted to the schools. I'm not entirely familiar with all the inner workings of how the color of money can change at this county level, but I am concerned, because it's, those things are both important, but when, for example, Brook Road is flooded and the buses can't get through, or the bridge at Raven Road is washed out, and there's no school to go to in the first place. I would just like to keep, remind the board and all those decision-makers who handle our money, that we understand that there's challenges, you know? The $20,000 that Comcast wants, for me, means other stuff doesn't happen, so we get it. But you guys have a job of balancing at the big-picture level, and that includes transportation. That includes making sure that, you know, Brook Road doesn't flood, because there's too much development along it, for example, and the culverts aren't the right size, or, you know, the Bell's Hill doesn't, another Bell's Hill doesn't happen. I mean, those things take money, too, and it's unfortunate that sometimes a raise isn't as big as somebody would like, or a resource officer has to juggle one more responsibility, but something, somewhere has to give in that particular, that financial balloon. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming out tonight. Okay, would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the board. We really do not have all the information that we need from the schools, as we discussed at the Fab meeting today. What is the will of the board?
Madam Chair, I believe we should defer this issue until at least the next board meeting, when we have an opportunity to gather more data.
Okay.
So is, I think that's a motion to table.
Okay.
And I'll second it, once you've closed the public hearing.
Oh, thank you. I will close the public hearing at this point in time. And I.
Madam Chair, I amend, motion to defer, not table.
Right. Okay, I have a motion, and I have a second for Mr. Cohen. All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, please cast your vote to defer item proposed Resolution R18-191. Tally the vote. Motion to defer is unanimous. That ends our public hearings. The board is now going to go back into closed session to continue what we did not complete after our 3:00 meeting. So Mr. Snellings, if you could please read for us again.
Resolution to authorize closed meeting, whereas the board desires to hold a closed meeting for one consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual litigation, Allen versus Stafford County, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting. in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating and litigating posture of the board. And, let's see, let me skip this one. And the 2015 Memorandum of Understanding with Mosaic Choir Capital LLC, which are specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by counsel. And three, discussion concerning a prospective business whose proposed inventory would solely fill at least 100,000 square feet of a structure, at least 100,000 square feet in size, where no previous announcement has been made of the business interest in locating its facilities in the county. And whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711, A5, A7 and A8, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. So moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Chairman, I'm sorry, may I also add in the discussion of the use of service districts? That item was left off. To add that to Supervisor Snellings' motion.
Okay, I will, um, service districts, where do you see that?
It's under room, it's under the second room rule.
Okay, okay. Then I make the motion as amended.
Okay, I have a motion and a second as amended. Any discussion? Okay, cast your vote to go into closed session. Tally the vote. The board is now in closed session. Thank you. I have a motion, I have a second. Is there any discussion? Please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passed unanimously. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.